Even as we celebrate and share in your joy is to retire. Last week's graduation was a poignant reminder of the special community we share here in Manchester Essex and the importance of the close knit relationships that our students, staff, and faculty form with each other. These connections are the glue that holds Manchester Essex together. The last couple of years have been particularly challenging for everyone, but due to your outstanding level of commitment, we have weathered the storm. You have inspired us with your dedication, and I know that the district will remember the lessons that you have taught and pass them on to the next generation. So, we send you off with our best wishes on the beginning of a new and exciting chapter in your lives, and you will all be missed. And I will put it over to Mr. Willis to...
Oh, yes. So my staff member who's retiring is here tonight, Sarah Graves. So Sarah is a Manchester resident, actually. Her daughters went through the school system about 10 years or so ago. We needed to hire a special education teaching assistant. I remember Alice and I talking about needing to, you know, find somebody who could do a little bit more than your average teaching assistant needs, somebody who had some literacy background and some teaching background. And we found kind of like this amazing catch in Sarah Graves. She was a former kindergarten teacher who took time off to raise her kids and didn't want to go back into the classroom, but wanted to get back involved in education. So she applied for the job. We went through a pretty extensive hiring process. She rose to the top, and we've just been really thankful to have her in our school every day. Great educator, great colleague, great friend, and the kids have all been hundreds of kids that she's worked with over the years, I feel better from her time with us.
Sure, I would just second that. Sarah has been a gem. She's extraordinarily flexible, has worked with a wide variety of students and needs, and our special ed teachers have very much relied on her as just an exceptional support person. So she will very much be missed.
I don't know if the camera can see Debbie Welling over there, but Dr. Debbie Welling is tucked away over there. It's my... Canal, actually, but I'm not sure if folks can see Debbie, but I was hoping people could. It's my absolute pleasure to congratulate Debbie Welling, our school psychologist at Essex Elementary School, on her retirement. I'd like to share some thoughts that I shared the other week at her retirement party, which is a lot of fun. I'll keep it to a few brief points that we're sharing this evening. Let's leave it at that right there. And so this is what I had said to people, and it's when I think of Debbie and when most of us think of Debbie and her work at Essex Elementary School, we think along the lines of what John just said, someone who is a very good friend and a colleague to everyone in the building, everyone. Someone who's highly supportive of everyone and is willing to step in and help any way she can at any time. Debbie is really calm and cool under pressure, which is awesome, especially after the last couple of years that we've had that have been really taxing to everybody. She's a consummate professional, always professional, and she's someone who's always positive, and I think we can all learn that. So I appreciate that. Debbie is someone who's dedicated in helping our students become more self-aware and socially aware, because she does a lot of small group work and we've seen a lot of great in that area. And Debbie is also a great listener for everyone, including myself. I've often sat and chatted with Debbie, looking for somebody to talk to. So after 27 at Essex Elementary School, it's just not going to be the same without her walking through the halls and helping us all out next year. We're going to miss Debbie terribly, but we thank her for her service, and we wish her all the best as she embarks on her next journey. And we know there's going to be a lot of camping, camping, bike riding, hiking, boating, a lot of fun outdoor activities. So we really will miss Debbie, but we're really excited for her, for her next chapter.
We can hug now. And if I can just chime in on Debbie. So I came here 11 years ago, and Debbie was here, and she just has been the most flexible person in all the changes that have taken place. And she has rolled with every change being thrown at her. She's been incredibly flexible. She's, when I came, she was a chairperson and a school psychologist, and then she assumed the full school psych, full-time school psychologist role. She's helped with RTI, TAT, I mean, anything that we have introduced. She's really just been an integral part, and as Jen said, incredibly professional and such an amazing colleague to all of us. And you really will be missed. You're just an exceptional, unique and school psychologist, and I would really miss you.
So from the high school, there's definitely some themes that are kind of bubbling up from the surface here. I'm going to talk about Ann Landry. Ann is a kind and loving special education teacher at the high school. She balances her compassion for students while also maintaining very strong standards, holding kids accountable, and challenging them. She is a consummate professional dedicated to helping all of her students find success. She knows each of her students very well and takes an interest in their lives. According to Jimmy Millie, she makes all those around her better with her kindness, compassion, and positivity. John Mulady, who wrote me a long thing, but I'm going to just take a little quick out, but I don't think he would be alive without you by what's... Ann has played an integral role in my teaching. She taught me how to improve my lessons so that they, so that they could have an impact on all students in the room. She understands what students with different learning styles need. In order to achieve success, students gain confidence in their learning and find their voice in their classroom when working with Ann. Students definitely gain confidence in their learning, I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
Tricia Millie.
Added, Ann is always supportive of students and teachers and is available whenever we need. Ann is always upbeat and friendly. And we know that you will enjoy spending time with your family during your retirement, particularly all your grandchildren. You're going to be greatly missed by all of us. Thank you for everything that happens. What?
Can I chime in on Ann? So I just want to say that Ann, and I have to share with everyone that one of the quotes that Tricia read was about Ann making the people around her better. And so we've had some opportunities for growth in our special education program when I got here, and I managed to convince Ann to move for, she was at the middle school doing just an incredible job working with students. I managed to convince her to move up to the high school for a year, and she never left. And she, and she took that department to just an incredible level of professionalism, of differentiation for students, definitely helped the general education teachers to adjust their practices, to work with students with disabilities. She, and fortunately, she never looked back. I'm sure the middle school was sad about that, but it worked out really well. I think she grew to love the high school. And she just is, she's the model special ed teacher, and I'm going to so miss you. And you're, you have a great sense of humor, and you've just been a wonderful person to work with. So you will, you will, you too will be greatly missed.
I have two others to speak about. Dan Lundigan. Dan has served as a math teacher and the department, in math department chair during his years at M R H S. According to Josh Wodkowski, Dan always looked out for members of his department and aimed to help them improve their craft. Lauren DeBois added, Dan has done a lot of, has done a lot to advocate for students and teachers alike. He is a leading voice at department chair meetings, always looking for ways to improve our school community. Dan has enjoyed working with students in and out of the classroom. He headed our math team in fierce math competitions. He has chaperoned the senior trip, whitewater rafting in Forks, Maine, and taken on the student basketball team as a key member of our faculty team. Dan is very musical and an avid guitarist, and I've been told that in retirement, Dan aims to be a struggling musician in the Boston Music Scene, playing for tens of people. Dan, enjoy your retirement in Salem with your lovely wife. You'll be missed at M R H S. And I also have the honor of speaking about Muffin Driscoll. I want to take a moment to thank Muffin for her service to the M R H S community. According to Robbie Billsbury, Muffin Driscoll, Muffin Driscoll has woven her incredibly organized, professional, and kid birth energy into so much of our school culture. Muffin is not only the glue to logistics of our school's athletic program through assisting our district's A Ds over the years. Outside of the world of athletics, Muffin has been the foundational voice for theater in our community, where she helped to run both summer stage and summer show. She also delighted in assisting in nearly any capacity in the school's drama fest program over the years. Incredibly, Muffin also shown a deep dedication to the DECA program through her chaperoning with her husband Steve in helping to coordinate DECA events. Muffin is the Hornets' number one fan. Muffin supported the athletic department outside of her role through her work with the Boosters Club and the organization of a carnival to support the athletics boosters during the summer months. Please join me in thanking her for her services to the M R H S community. We'll kick over to Avi.
Sure. I'm going to speak about Diane Kuz, who is retiring. Diane is a 20-plus-year veteran of the regional school district. She is one of those people who was here when we regionalized and when we came in, myself actually as a new person, maybe 10 years afterwards. She was always one of those people who could give us that historic perspective of where we've been and where we were going. And she worked covering payroll for many years. She moved from there into facility rental and in HR. And I think just seeing what's happened in the business office over the years, I think she has overseen, together with our team, just enormous change. And Diane has been a person who has rolled with a lot of change downstairs, including some of the different people who've come and gone. We've been here for quite some time, but before then, there were many different leaders downstairs in the business role or in superintendency role, and she's been a constant, so much so that in the HR function, one of the greatest values that she's always provided has been the historical sense of what's the precedent, how have we treated people in the past? So when we wanted to focus on how do we make sure we implement HR procedures fairly, Diane was always a great repository of information to say, yes, there are three or four other cases like this in the past. And I think she's been a really great advisor to Pam and me as we've kind of wrestled with some of those procedural issues. So that's been terrific. I think from a personality standpoint, I just, I think anyone who knows her knows that she has a very funny sense of humor and just with a kind of sharp tins to it that as a New Yorker, I've always appreciated, and it's made me laugh many times in a lot of our conversations as we've seen a lot of different things, and I've appreciated that. But I think more than that, you know, she has probably helped to onboard or hire almost every person in this district, and she's also been there for people when they've had some of their biggest challenges in life. And she's a person that a lot of people have called when they were facing various life issues that were pretty significant sometimes. And I think to have been a listener for those people and to provide them with that ear and compassion, I think just takes a special person, and I think she's done an incredible service to so many people in this district. And I think it's something we should all be very grateful for, and I know personally, I have really appreciated that. So we will miss her, and we want to thank her for her many years of service and wish her the best.
So we're losing four people to retirement who are so integral to special education and these three people we care so much about and have worked so closely with. And I, you know, and then we have Rosie, who has been just my right arm for the last 11 years. She finishes my sentences. She has the file ready to go that I'm looking for before I even leave my desk to go looking for it. She just, she's a caring, compassionate person who just brings such a spirit of service to her work. She's comforting and supportive to parents who are concerned or worried or upset or just have questions. She supports all of the special education staff around various aspects of what we do. And she just is one of the kindest people I know. And I don't, I have no idea how I'm going to go forward when she leaves in July, but somehow I will. I know that I will, but it's just hard to imagine being here without Rosie. But I, I know that she's going off to a lot of fun and wonderful time with her family. And I just thank you so much, Rosie, for everything you've done for me and for the district, and I, I just wish you fun and relaxing retirement, and you may be called back into the saddle.
I'll just close out by echoing Alison and Avi's statements about Diane and Rosie. We are going through a real big change downstairs, and we're losing a lot of institutional knowledge and people we lean on very heavily on a daily basis. So I know we're going to have some sad moments in July as we think about turning the page to the new. When I think of all of the retirees, there are themes that emerge, and they are people who have been with this district for a very long time and have been incredibly adaptable to all of the changes that they've gone through. As Avi mentioned, the first 10 years had a lot of changes, but the last 12 years, we've asked an incredible amount from our staff in terms of learning new things, trying new things, organizing in a different way. And the folks who have been discussed tonight have always rolled with the punches, found a way to find the silver lining and keep kids at the center of everything that they're doing. So they have been a constant for our students, whether they're supporting central office functions so that the schools can have their focus on kids, or whether they are right there in the trenches, working with the kids every day. I rest very easy knowing what good hands our students are in. You're all irreplaceable. I don't know how we're going to do it and move on, but I know we're also all very happy for you because it, turning this page to the next chapter is exciting, and I think we'll all, we'll all be there someday, and we'll come find you when we're free. But I know you all have rich lives beyond here, and this is, hopefully, this new chapter will give you the time to spend with your family and your friends and your kids and your grandkids and really just rest from the last two years, which have been a challenge above all else, and you won't be a stranger. You'll come back and visit. We'll put you on that sublist come July 1st if you'll let us. So just simply, simple words, thank you for your service. You're irreplaceable, and we are very happy for you and for this next chapter in your life. And it's my pleasure to always give, I'm turning toward Jen, but looking behind her, the gift, the district cloth, which we give to all our retirees so you can sit back on your porch, put up your feet, and watch the time go by in retirement. It's just a small memento so you can keep us with you as you move on. So thank you very much, and thank you everyone for coming tonight and speaking on behalf of people. This is a new tradition, and we hope to build it out every year, but it, we just really want to leave you knowing that you're going to be missed, and your work has been appreciated. Thank you, guys. I think we just need to cut the cake and roll that out before you go. So folks at home, we're going to put it on pause for a little bit, and we will rejoin you shortly. They're heavy. Yeah, I was going to say, we have a nomination, and we have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Teresa, I am so grateful for your experience. I know that we are a little bit shallow on the depth of, in terms of years, but your knowledge and your commitment is very impressive and feel very, very lucky to have you, and I'm happy to nominate you for chair.
Thank you. That was kind.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I need a second Matt's nomination.
We also take dissenting discussion here, just so you know.
So there's first, a second. Any additional discussion? Questions, concerns, comments?
I mean, I can just say the same thing after serving with you in the facilities subcommittee this year, and I just think that you have the organizational skills and the right experience and temperament to be a great chair.
And ditto all that on the finance subcommittee as well. We've been on the finance subcommittee, which I know is, I think is a pre-writ for, is it a pre-writ?
It's not official.
Whatever. It's a good thing to have near your belt. Because obviously that eats up a lot of our discussion, conversations, stuff like that, so.
May not be a pre-writ, but it's definitely a big piece of...
Yeah, a good piece on the resume, so as well for that.
Any more discussion? If there's no further discussion, we can move to a vote. So all in favor of Teresa, who's been serving as chair of the Manchester School Committee, say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous, and I will officially hand the gavel over to Teresa.
It does exist, I'm glad. Because I intend to smash things.
Thank you. We're also ordering all new nameplates. They kind of went into retirement for COVID, but we've got nameplates and all the old officials.
Yeah, these are collector's items now.
Do they get to take theirs on their way out?
We're going to...
Can we distribute?
We have everybody is going back to 2010. So I found Alva's tucked behind somebody. So we're going to find something fun to do with those. Either gift them or create a wall.
Oh, nice. Well, thank you all. I will do my best. I will do my best. That is all I can do. Okay, so that being the case then, it is time for us to organize the rest of our leadership and subcommittees. And so as a reminder, we have a chair and a vice chair serving together, and then we have four subcommittees. We have facilities, finance, policy, and negotiation. And so first, we will look for nominations for the vice chair role. Do we have any nominations for the vice chair role? I can nominate myself. I mean, not myself, but...
Power grab.
I think historically, if there is an Essex chair, there's usually a Manchester vice chair. And then in terms of the terms, you are up next year is the goal then to have staggered terms so that the chair and the vice chair would not...
Expire together? That is my goal. So we go ahead.
Operationally, it's helpful.
Yeah.
Yes. Kind of in a new...
I think we, there's some discussion to have just in terms of can we look at the policy for when terms start versus the election, but with what we can do right here in the moment, I think it makes sense if the right person wants to participate and is up for the challenge of the job.
So having thought about exactly those things, did you... Sure, go ahead.
Can you maybe briefly for newbies to let us know what is the primary job of the vice chair?
That's a great question, because I have not served as vice chair. But my understanding would be to support the chair in just a teamwork approach in leading the team, but also to stand in when the chair is not present, certainly, importantly. Anything else you want to add to that?
I'll add my observations, and please know that what I share is what I know from our past and not necessarily what has to be. But because we're a two-town region, it's typically that the chair and the vice chair are the point person for members and other boards in that town. The chair takes the official spokesperson role, so if there's ever a press release that has to be made, or people are contacting the committee to put things on the agenda, typically runs through the chair unless he or she isn't here, can't fulfill the job, then it will move to the vice chair. So typical, you know, second backup to leading the meetings role, but the way we function, there's a lot of cowork that's done in terms of organizing the different constituencies in each town. So. Does that help or further confuse?
No, that's helpful.
And for the previous statement about staggered terms, Teresa and I are on the same term.
Yes. So that being the case, I will make a nomination, having thought about this a little bit, and I would like to nominate Chris Reed to serve as vice chair, given exactly those conditions that we just talked about. Is there a second?
A second.
Any more discussion?
I think that makes a lot of sense. I have a lot of faith in Chris.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of Chris Reed serving as vice chair for Manchester Essex School Committee? Say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I will do that. Not every time, but I will do it some of the time.
Order, yeah. We need to order.
I'm usually the one that needs to be ranked into order, so it's okay. Okay, so looking at the subcommittees, we have again facilities, finance, policy, and negotiation. And having thought a bit about this as well, I have come to the meetings tonight with some recommendations about this. So again, a few things that, to keep in mind as we organize our subcommittees are that we are looking also at the same situation, that if we're looking at having someone from each town represented on each of these subcommittees, and ideally, it would be nice if their terms didn't expire at the same time, but I don't think that's a deal breaker at this point, especially depends on which, which subcommittees we're talking about. I feel more strongly about that on the finance subcommittee than the others in particular. So I will take the liberty of making some suggestions, and then we can open it for discussion. Is there a mo, there doesn't need to be a motion for this though, right?
I would make your recommendations, and then you can have a motion for appointment on each.
Got it.
Or you could have the whole, the motion as a whole slate, whatever.
Got it, okay.
Could we have a similar kind of overview of each four, kind of operationally, what they look like?
Yep, absolutely. So maybe we could do it by the people who have served on those, on those things so far. That might help. So I get to talk a lot. Matt, would you like to speak to the finance subcommittee?
Yep. So finance subcommittee, our standing meeting is a collaborative meeting with the two towns, members of the select boards and selectmen, and the finance of the towns. I believe it's, as we get closer, is it once monthly, twice monthly usually? I know it depends, but...
At least once a month, starting in end of August, and then probably two times a month in a year like this where it's going to be a lot of decisions to be made.
And then historically, that's been around, I believe, like 9:00 AM on Fridays, but that's obviously subject to people's schedules and things like that. We do that, we do that leading up to budget season. We obviously have additional conversations if needed for clarification on the vote, and then obviously, we, then we discuss it as a school committee for the, for the budget to pass as a school committee, and then that goes to the towns for the approval. Usually, I know, no, Ken wasn't on the finance subcommittee. I was saying he was, he sat on the Davis, Davis at the town meeting, but that's...
As Chris will this year, because he's...
Yeah. So, and so it's really, I guess that would be the combination, so then that would be the potentially speaking at town, or introducing the budget at the annual town meeting. So yeah, it's just, it is a collaborative, collaborative effort with the two towns, which we've, have seen in years past as the most, probably the most effective way of trying to get to an amicable number that makes sense for both towns. So it's a lot of conversations.
And this year in particular, we have some things coming up, so.
If, you can stop me if interested. The brief history is it started in 2010 when Tony Geep was chair of the school committee after several difficult budget seasons where it was perceived that the school is coming out a tentative budget with unrealistic surprise percentage growth rates, nine, 10%. And then kind of trying to whittle it down to the end. So I think the compact going in at that time was let's have a no surprises approach and have ongoing communication between all of... and have ongoing communication between all of the board chairs, boards of selectmen, boards of finance, school committee, and the town administrators, myself and Avi, so that we're both getting briefings on the state of the budget in each of the towns and the schools. So that as we pull into our initial tentative budget discussion in November, everyone has a sense of what's coming out. And the first time someone is hearing it or hearing about it isn't any large public hearing where people are being surprised. Because if we came out with something at 10% growth, that throws the towns totally off kilter because we've broken all of their financial models. So that was the, kind of the origin of it. And it's just built over time. There's been pretty, pretty stable committees on both sides. So it's kind of built into a rhythm. But what we've seen is as, it's been a nice group to have in play as new members come on any of the boards because there's still a group that holds the history and the knowledge of how budgets were built in the past, understand why we might have some of the current problems that we do. So the goal is collaboration and no surprises and joint decision-making.
And just one last thing I'll add, just for like a technical aspect, is the budget drafts are created obviously from the school. Avi and Pam will give us, like, we're not, we're not at the birth of the creation of the budget from scratch. We just, we enter in once there's drafts and then that's when we kind of start our conversations as well.
But where does the conversation happen about kind of the strategic plan and anything that, you know, budget scenarios about, you know, this option for strategic plan versus that option for strategic plan?
At the collaboration team.
I would say here.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Districts.
Oh, the districts.
As a whole group or as part of this?
Yes, as a whole school committee.
Yeah.
And I think we can get into details of that as we go. So what we've been doing over the past few years is really building a budget to town, school jointly determined constraints. So we have done internal budget, zero-based budget exercises to look at different areas. But in terms of when we start in October, we know from past years of discussion and agreement in what breaks the town budget models, that our budget needs to come in at three and a half. If it's going to be over three and a half, we have to have some serious conversation about how we're going to solve that problem. And if we can bring it under three and a half in any way, shape, and form without moving off of level services, that is what the ask is on the town side. So historically, we don't necessarily have budget discussions in context with the backdrop of the strategic plan and what we're trying to achieve. Most of the conversations have been, how do we hold on to what we have? Once we've determined that we can hold on to it, what efficiencies can we find in the budget? Reorganization, program cancellation, redistribution, redistribution of funds to get at some of our identified goals. So that usually happens in that March, that February, March window. Once we have a secure number that the towns feel that they can carry forward.
Sorry, I was referring to the.
Is that fair, Sarah, as a kind of?
Yes, I agree.
So it's not until March that you start really talking about what can stay and what has to go. Prior to that, you're working off just a number really. And then we're backing into it what we really want and we do that as a whole group.
Yeah, so in, in, in January preliminarily, we'll start to talk about if, if the num, if the request for cut or they're never requesting to cut anything in particular, but if we're, our natural growth has us at four and a half and they need us to be at three, five, we'll start to talk in broad strokes about how we think we can close the gap from the tentative budget, which is essentially a rollover. The budget we have this year rolled forward with all of the assumptions baked in for, well, one is an assumption. We know the contract for years in advance, the, the market trend for healthcare, and our best projection in November for out of district placement for the following fall. So there's a lot of placeholders in the budget. By January, it starts to take a little bit more shape. But we'll talk in broad strokes, like, well, we're coming in with a 12% on healthcare because that's what our reps are telling us to expect based on our, our profile right now. But in January, we might say we can bring that number down. So one of the ways we're going to close the gap is we're planning on being able to bring that number down. That'll yield X thousands of dollars. If we aren't able to realize real savings from that, we're looking at three FTEs spread out between TAs and teachers, but we're not naming things at that point. What we like to do is try not to cause chaos until we actually know what is the real number we have to achieve. Part of the problem is, and we were going to talk a little bit about this in the line, in the lead into the budget discussion tonight, is we're working off of so many assumptions that things are always moving. And we won't know our real numbers until after the budget closes for the two towns. So after we have to submit and vote on an adopted budget number, we will then learn our healthcare number. The state still hasn't determined our chapter 70. Avi's got a model that predicts it within inches. But there are other things and surprises like out of district that can happen after budget. So January's high, high level, what we, areas we could cut. By February and March, we don't need the towns to be on board with any of that. So we tend to make those final decisions at that point.
So sort of bringing it back to the reorganization portion of this, because we're going to talk in detail about budget and really come to understand a lot of that together as a group as well. One thing to consider is that, that the people who serve on the finance subcommittee are going to need to be prepared to come to understand and be able to explain and tell the story this year because we are, we are dealing with a correction of some sort. And so that's another thing to consider in this. So moving the conversation forward, do we have any, it's not nominations.
Did you want to finish going through what each subcommittee is?
I don't know. Do we, do we want to go through all of them?
Yeah, so we have a sense of this.
So you go through the, the three subcommittees, what they do. I would also like all of us kind of tell us, especially we are new, I'm new, about your professional experience, your personal experience, your strength. So it will help me to kind of decide who is the right pick to love.
Okay, is that reasonable? The expenditure of time? Okay, maybe we could keep it somewhat brief though, because we are, we are, yeah, okay.
I'll run them down and everybody can jump in.
Great.
And give color.
Yes.
So elementary facilities has to be changed to facilities.
Yes.
That started when we were gearing up for the memorial project. So facilities is just an ongoing advisory group that helps with capital planning. In this case, our top, top, top issue right now is sort of field replacement. On the horizon, we'll be working on the timetable for the Essex elementary rebuild. And right on its heels is this building's going to hit half-life. And we'll have to have a real solid plan for moving just from preventative to proactive investment in kind of what areas of the building need to be brought up to date. When will the roof need to be done? So those are some topics that are on that agenda. Facilities ties very closely to finance. It's not managing any of the facilities projects. It's really helping to plot out some of the big financial asks, which if we're successful in our override, should be mostly internal work of how do we want to plan usage of reserves, which is our targeted funding source for most of these projects. If we're not successful, it's how are we going to keep everything moving when we're needing to use pieces of reserves to maintain operations? Policy committee is, it can run hot and cold in terms of some years, there's a lot of policy to look at. In some years, there isn't. We did a large policy manual development. So in 2010, when Avi and I joined the district, there was no active policy manual. So that, the first year was just kind of getting basic policies in place. We worked with MASC on that. I don't really think we need a major cover-to-cover review of it. But we do have some policies on deck this year. I think we want to talk about, you know, just kind of the, the timing of board members and election and when their, their terms begin versus when the election is to kind of create a smooth transition. And I'm just drawing a blank right now, but I have that list that I rattled off last week. So we have a lot, a few things in the works for this year. It's a good place to, it kind of get to know some of the governance documents, harassment policies, things that will come up in different roles you play in terms of hearing grievances or managing public complaint. And then the negotiation team is exactly what it says. It's kind of a temporary group. It was very active during COVID because we were doing lots of impact discussions. So this year, we are on deck to negotiate a new three-year contract. We have a one-year holdover, so starting tomorrow night, whoever's on this team, we will welcome you to a negotiation session to meet our attorney and lay out some, kind of the basics of how the process will roll. And we've changed the process this year. Historically, we've used interest-based bargaining. So kind of a collaborative approach to problem solving and identifying joint areas for growth and change. This year, we have opted for going a more traditional route where we're going to exchange written proposals, outlining which each, which each, what each team is looking for and hoping for in the next, in the next contract renewal. The goal in that was not to deviate from the collaborative approach that we've enjoyed with the association, but to streamline the process. Our hope was to get it done quickly and have all of those numbers in front of us before we build the budget next year. IBP has taken us up to a year and a half at times to complete because of the nature of the problem-solving process and it's a, it's time-consuming. So the goal this year was to shift gears and tighten it up. We'll see how it goes starting tomorrow. I think everyone's in a good position to crank through it.
That sounds like a lovely overview. Does anyone have questions about any of those?
So I'm still trying to figure out the finance, how we inform the finance conversation from a program perspective. So it's not just about a number we have to meet, because that puts us in a very reactive position. How do, I guess what, it's, we don't have much time. And there's a lot to think about, especially in terms of the strategic plan items that we've identified last year. So how do we do that efficient? I don't see us doing that efficiently as a whole group between now and March, January, whenever you have to have those kind of settled, or at least initial versions of that. So I guess I'm wondering if that happens in the finance committee or the finance committee really is the collaborative aspect and this should happen somewhere else?
I think it's a combination of those things and a combination of all these things. And stop me if, if I speak out of turn, certainly, please. But especially in the coming year, right now, looking at the immediate need for work, right now, what we need to do is figure out our situation to get a correction. We need to figure out where we're at. And this is, this is going to be the time to actually come at it from a programmatic standpoint.
Right, because we need to tell the story programmatically, what we're working towards, not just what we can cut.
So, so it'll be a combination of discussion at the school committee table with all of us, but also a considerable amount of discussion at the subcommittee level and a lot at the collaborative level. Am I mischaracterizing?
If that's what we want it to be, yes. I think, I'd encourage you to think about your role on the, on the finance committee and our work with the. We're, it's, you're sending liaison to the district, to the inter-district, inter-board, intra? The big board, the joint boards team. So we may want to talk program, but that may not be the conversation that they want to have. And it's kind of a joint determined, it's been a very nuts and bolts, roll up your sleeves. This is where the committee wants the budget to come in. This is where the town wants the budget to come in. We haven't had a lot of in-depth conversation and it's not, nobody's fault and it's not a knock. It's not been about what are we trying to achieve. It's really been historically, you can achieve whatever the committee wants you to achieve or what you're internally determining, as long as it comes in at three and a half, where it doesn't matter to us, that's not our role.
So, so is it worth having another subcommittee that helps with that conversation?
That's the role of the school committee. What, your budget goal, you will set budget goals this summer and those budget goals will drive the budget development.
But how do we set budget goals if we don't know strategically what we're moving towards in terms of the program?
We do, we have a strategic plan.
Right, but those have implicat, you can make many choices within that strategic plan about, that have different budget implications. Where do we have that kind of model?
So bringing that down to the district improvement plan, the school improvement plans, then we have tangibles of what actually needs to, to take place. So that would be, I think, where we have those discussions, when the district improvement plan is presented to us and we vote to approve that, that would be where we have that discussion. And then taking it one step further, the schools adopt their school improvement plans. And we don't vote on the school, do we vote on the school improvement plans? Okay, so that's where those discussions take place and that is at the school committee.
Okay, so, so starting in the fall, up until January, we'll be having those conversations here.
I think when we go through the process with Dorothy Presser from MASC, they're going to scope out a chart that shows, school committee determines the what and the management team determines the how. And when the how meets the, when the program meets the budget, it comes here for decision and determination. That's how my little concentric circles map it out. But the, the strategic plan sets the vision of what you're trying, what you want us to try to achieve. The district plan is going to be, try to be action steps on how we're going to get there with the approval of the plan. Then kind of the minute detail, like whether or not they go with, if we do a program adoption, it bubbles up. But you know, whether or not they're going to train with VAS versus first step will likely be a curriculum office decision with the curriculum, internal curriculum committees.
So what I, what I would like to do is us not get too far into the weeds right now because I know we're so, we're so just looking at the work that needs to be done. And those are important questions that we do all need to understand.
I think MASC is a good resource for that because they're objective and they're going to be able to pull from their knowledge of how school committees should run by statute, by policy, and how they run in reality across the state.
And this is a strong plug right there on that note for the charting the course.
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement and, and so it, we understand that there's some trouble because the ones that are coming up are very far away. So we'll reach out and see what we can work. Were you able to take it when it was up here?
Yeah, and that's the goal we're trying to get. Dorothy Presser is your MASC rep to the region, so she's here to serve the committee.
Yeah.
And answer questions from an, from a school committee's perspective on how to do this. She was long-term chair of Linfield, so she understands communities like ours as well, so it's helpful. I know, Sarah, you had an ongoing conversation.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so, so I understand the desire to, to get to know our backgrounds and things. Maybe if we could just take 30 seconds each to, to do so, so that we have an idea. That's perfectly fair, background and experience. Matt, hit it.
Matt Harrington, currently Director of Finance and Operations for a small nonprofit. Previous to that, I was a director of operations for a K-12 charter school in Foxborough. Prior to that, I was a director of operations for a K-5 intercity charter school in Brooklyn. That's my work experience. Finance and operations.
Well done and on time. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Anna LaMitchell, CFO. I manage budgets from $2 million to $300 million, involved with the strategic planning, you know, working with organizations at different levels and including the board members as well. So I'm very interested in the finance committee.
We're not taking plugs. Background for 30 seconds, please, Erica.
Erica Spencer, I'm a practicing attorney. I have a distance background as a CPA, but as I say, my skills are probably closer to the advocacy rather than the CPA number crunching part. I'm not scared of a financial statement, but I spend more time advocating than I do looking at financials these days. Mother of three, did I say that? I feel like that's at least half of my job.
Thank you. I'm Teresa Whitman and I am on the school committee. That's my experience here. Two kids have some experience in small business and a little bit of experience in special education in different formats. But my primary brain here is that I've been active in the school since my daughter came into kindergarten, so that's eight years now.
Kate Koch, Sunquest. My background is in education. I have a master's in elementary education. I've been a classroom teacher in charter schools, private schools, and public schools, along with a special ed teacher. That's who I am, and a mom to two elementary schools.
And my background, I've been in technology sales my entire career. So that includes a lot of different things, negotiating a lot of different contracts, you know, sometimes in the billion-dollar range with a lot of different personalities and trying to make everyone happy, come together so that we have a good agreement in place. My wife's also an elementary school teacher, so you know, and she's been in education her entire career. So she has my ear and I, you know, lend, I don't know. I look to her for some advice with some of the things that we discuss here on the school committee as well.
And I'm Jake Foster. So I'm an educator as well. Started off as a high school science teacher, then a teacher educator, and then 11 years at the State Department of Education and, and then more recently, working on STEM and kind of facilities-related work from a program perspective.
Thank you all. Do you want to introduce yourselves while you're? You're not serving on subcommittees.
We're on all.
We're on all.
Yeah, exactly. So as we start this discussion, then I, what I'd like to submit is that there are a couple of things that are already sort of in process. And so, for example, the negotiations subcommittee, we knew this was coming. This was something that was sort of in process last year. And so I'm going to just right out of the gate, make a proposal that we keep Kate and Chris as our negotiations subcommittee, given that they were involved in the transition for that anyway. Any thoughts on that? Thumbs up? You win. You win.
I, I've asked Sister Chris informally, but there will be an opportunity, I assume, for all of us to contribute in some way to how we see negotiations proceeding.
Yes, negotiations in particular. And this year, would you like to, please?
So as soon as we are organized, we're going to have to have an executive session. That's where we can discuss strategy. Executive session is private until the strategy we're discussing and the execution of the agreements that we're working toward are complete and then those minutes become public. We did a lot of information gathering with the previous committee, so we have a sense of where they wanted to go. We have a session tomorrow, I think it will be a light session of some, we're still trying to establish ground rules. Coming out of that, if the intent is to work through the summer, we'll try to call an executive session meeting, which we can do on Zoom and it can be at morning or midday or in the evening, whatever works for the majority of the group, where we can share kind of what the proposal package looks like from them, what our proposals are based on information we gather and that's the time we can have you share with us other things you'd like us to pursue or look at. You'll get a whole bunch, whole big packet in writing from me with some recommendations and some things to look at before then. The other piece is the discussion on the table has been that this year's negotiations allow for silent observers, so that even though we have a team designated as the negotiation team to meet and prep with, Colby Brunt is our attorney, Threshoma Chan, Laura Miller will be taking the lead, we'll meet with her to kind of digest proposals and discuss kind of how we're going to strategize in the session. Both groups can have, teachers can have additional teachers come and watch how the proceedings unfold and this whole team can come and watch how the proceedings unfold. We can even invite members of our collaboration group, if they have interest and we know they have interest, to come and kind of bear witness and then through the different feedback loops, provide information for the negotiation team to go forward. Ultimately, the entire agreement comes back to this group for review and feedback, for a pre-vote before we make determination and then a final vote after they've executed their vote among the entire media staff. So this whole committee votes in approval and the entire teacher union votes to approve.
Is it usually two people, one subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you cannot overlap in different?
There's not a ton of need, I think we'll sort of address that in there, but in, in particular, some of them take a little bit more time and energy than others upfront and, and that sort of thing, so it sort of works itself out. But with seven of us and eight little spots available, there's not a ton of need for that. Okay, so with that understanding of negotiations, thank you for being willing to serve. We are all invited to be silent observers and, and this is an exciting new thing, especially given the makeup of a newer committee. So this is, this is great for us and having Colby on board will be a huge help. So the other thing that's sort of an in-process thing here is the finance subcommittee and that's, that's the thing that I, I personally feel strongest, most strongly, that we need to have people who are, whose terms don't expire together, that's you and me, Matt. So for consistency purposes, we came in at the same time and we had two outgoing people and it was, it was a lot to take in all at once and so for consistency on the board. And given the, the background and interest that we have here, I would like to make a recommendation that I continue serving on the finance subcommittee, also as chair, that's a traditional appropriate role, and that we excuse Matt from serving and invite Anna to serve on that subcommittee. Any discussion on that?
Well, if Anna's up for it.
Sure, yes. I think she, yeah.
Because it is going to be a lot of work this year, so, and we have a lot of important things to try to accomplish, right? So, but I think you'd be great on it, so.
Thank you, I'll do my best.
So that's an acceptance, barring any other discussion? Okay, adopt.
Teresa was already like doing some really amazing work this past year with Essex.
And we need that continuity, that will be.
Yeah.
Well, we will do our best, we will, we will be working closely together. Excellent. So then the next part here that I would like to submit is that where Pam brought forth the idea that the facilities is so closely tied with the finance situation and where we do have one overlapping role here, I would like to propose that Matt, with his background, certainly, and, and you're not working every day in facilities anymore, right? So, so it's like, it's not a terrible thing. I would like to propose that you and I team up for this facility subcommittee with your experience and expertise in it and my representation on the finance subcommittee. That's a proposal I'm making. Is there any discussion or thought about that?
So I was actually thinking that I would be facilities, I've helped out with the Memorial School in Essex and that's part of my professional role as well, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, I don't really see myself, not real interested in the policy one at this point, at least not from what I've heard in terms of.
Okay, well, we can, we can discuss the policy and then sort of back into the facilities if we need to. So of course, if you haven't noticed, that leaves Erica and Jake in policy subcommittee. That's intentional and again, this is just the recommendations I'm bringing forth, this is why we discuss it, but that actually is intentional because we do have some policy revision that needs to take place. And it's, it's also, I mean, it's been a tradition that, that new, new members take a, a turn on the policy subcommittee to have a chance to get a better understanding of that. We have talked about making that a more standing meeting because we actually do have some things that need to be addressed. And again, this transition, the election and timing of, of this transition is a key one right up front. And so I really feel that your experience with, at the state level with school districts and your experience, because I've worked with you frankly, I can't say about your experience with lawyering, but, but because I've worked with you on a couple of things now through the school, that that would be a really advantageous for us in terms of having some actual policy revision. So it wasn't so much of our professional backgrounds, it's more an intentional looking at, at that rather than interest. Is that something you'd be open to?
Reluctantly.
I'll say reluctantly, I'll just say thank you.
I would much rather be on the facilities, that's much closer to what I've been doing for the district all along.
So the, the facilities, things that we're dealing with right now, again, the turf field replacement is the, the top thing that again, is sort of in process. Looking at how we work this, Pam and Abby, do you have any suggestions if we have sort of a difference of, of outlook and opinion on this? I, I have my reasons for making the recommendation, but I'm also interested in your, in your outlook.
I can only share what I know is top, of, top of the list.
Yep.
And we have Highland Field, which we can execute on independently, meaning with decisions from this group and mostly internal decisions because it's replaced. Big Lift is going to be Brook Street Field. And that's going to be a big, an extended political discussion and negotiation with the town of Manchester over cost sharing, because we own a piece of the replacement and they own a piece of the replacement, so we're going to have to go back and trace history. But this is mostly internal work, but it's going to be probably a negotiation with the town about how we're going to manage that going forward, what the expectations are for that field. Typically, when we start to, historically, historically, when we address that field, questions that come up hit neighborhood concerns. Should we put lights on the field? What's the sound system going to look like? You know, how much time will Park and Rec get on the field versus school? So it's kind of tied into a lot of wants and desires over the years that haven't been realized. So I would say that project is very heavy Manchester outreach and then it's also going to be heavily, there would be heavy work done with the environmental subcommittee in Manchester because of where it sits. And anything that happens there, happens I think within the danger zone and it's going to probably require a lot of back and forth with them. A lot of that gets handled internally, but ultimately we'll need representation at board meetings and things like that, potentially from subcommittees. You want to chime in? And then we'll be moving to the Essex piece.
I think the thing that I've seen with the facility subcommittee, recently it's been focused on the Memorial School building project. Prior to that, it was kind of kicking that process off. I think in a way, it's almost like a, it's a different version of finance subcommittee in some ways because it's dealing with multi-year, non-operational budget or more capital budget. And so it kind of ties into that and so really what we've been working on is capital planning, which ties into the topic of reserve funds and how those get managed. And that ends up going back to the towns about them understanding why we need reserves, how they're, you know, helping us to address our long-term liabilities on a building standpoint and prioritizing those needs. We don't tend to get involved as much with the building committee being a very big exception because that's a real project, but prior to that, we don't get involved as much in details of the specific facilities projects, as much as shepherding the decisions that we need to advise school committee on. How big will it be? When will it happen? What decisions need to be made? And the other thing, I've just been listening to all these conversations, all these subcommittees bring back recommendations to the full school committee, so they do the interim work so that when we come back to the big group, people can say, okay, what progress was made in between the meetings? That way we keep things moving along. So I don't know if that's helpful or.
Actually, I think that's a really important point for us to all recognize that at the beginning, you know, right on our agenda, we have subcommittee reports and that is what we start with, is bringing back a report from the subcommittees so that we can have discussion about that here as appropriate and that is really, sorry, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I think it's probably worked when, so when we started subcommittees, 11, 12 maybe, we started them as working groups. So I think they're caught somewhere between the official definition of a subcommittee, which is going to require, if, if you're going to have decision-making power, we should post and have minutes in each of those meetings. They've been operating as working groups where if you need a sounding board, people to help dig in, people to have conference, like the finance subcommittee, it's, it's not a posted meeting, it's a meeting of a working group of town officials trying to keep each other informed. No decisions get made, but it's sharing, this is the topic that came up at FinCom and this is really the concern that they have this year. So when you're going back to your meeting, you really need to take people's temperature on the fact that we're not going to be able to budge over X. So they're more communication groups as they're structured. If we want to move them, it's the committee's determination, if you want to move them to more formal post decision-making and minutes taken, we're just going to have to organize a little differently. We're going to need to have a secretary who's able to attend those meetings and we can seek counsel to make sure we are all, what we're doing is in line. But we've been relying on the reports to the committee to be the means of keeping track of what happens. So just a little bit of background on how it was structured, not sure if it's the right or the wrong thing, but it is.
So that being the case, that's food for thought for us to take with us as well, that, that we can think about that, we don't have to decide that portion of it tonight. But bringing it back to the, the reorganization, recognizing what the current situation is, I'm going to ask if you would consider that reluctant yes again, because I do, looking at the, the actual needs of what we're facing immediately for this year, I think that Matt and I are well suited to accomplish that in, in a way that we've already kind of laid the groundwork for. And so, and in addition, I really do would like to have your expertise on that policy subcommittee.
Could I do both?
No, because then we have an outsized town representation in this, even though it's a working group, it's still, we're, we're keeping town balanced.
And you're saying you because of the budget perspective?
Yes, primarily the budget, but also the political aspect of this, yes.
So the budget part of it actually attracts me somewhat to that and without being able to participate on the finance committee, that would be one way to contribute.
So at this point, I am going to just ask, will you please serve on the policy subcommittee for this year?
Putting me on the spot, huh?
I am putting you on the spot because I know what we're doing, I know what we have to do and I don't, I'm not doing it lightly. So I'm, I'm recognizing the history of where we've been for the last two years and where we have to get this year and I know where we definitely need your skills. And I also know where we need the continuity that we've already started establishing.
I'll echo that, I'll just say that Teresa has spent a tremendous amount of time laying this foundation and making sure that each and every brick, so to speak, is in the right place so that we have the trust of the towns moving forward. And I think that she has a good understanding both of where we're going to go. I think that that institutional knowledge is needed right now. I think that we're at a critical, a critical point for both, for all, for all of this really, but particularly for the budget.
Teresa, you mentioned that for the facilities, the first or primary objective relates to the turf fields and some of the groundwork that needs to be laid with the town of Manchester in terms, especially with respect to Brook Street. Matt, I was just wondering, like, do you, do you have, do you feel like you've been able to develop those connections?
In town?
Yeah.
No.
Because I, so I will just throw out there and I.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to serve on the policy committee, I don't care where it is. But I will tell you that I have been actively trying to help with the turf fields for the last decade. My husband has been on the soccer board for the last decade and works with Cheryl Marshall to allocate field space at that turf and deal with the situation at that turf, which has been really, really challenging for a long time. I don't need to be on that committee, but I do think that we should be tapping into resources and connections in terms of the people in the community who have really actively, I think probably just because I have high school kids, my kids have been playing on these tars for a long time and I, I know who the people are that have been trying to force this issue for a while.
Yeah, so I think my, my, my contribution would be just because I've done the capital projects in schools for like a decade.
Yes, and I, I have no idea about any of that. I will tell you, I will tell you that I do know kind of some of the community players.
Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, so I think it's important too to realize that just because Matt's on the facility subcommittee, like we all make those decisions and not just that, we should all have input and be trying to help and support Matt and Teresa with what we want to do, whether that be with specific connections. So you'll still have as much influence as, you know, basically as you would like, right? As much time as you're willing to kind of put into help support what our goals are and make sure that everyone knows how important those are and how important it is to us as a committee and also the town and make sure that residents are heard and we're communicating and we have the support that we need to actually get it done, because it will take a vote to get done, right? And that's going to be just so critical to make sure that we're supporting, you know, Matt and Teresa, but in order, I think what Teresa's saying and what Matt's also saying too is the actual, you know, the part of just being in some of these meetings and they have the experience because we've been trying to work on this.
Yeah, I'm not trying to encourage anybody.
And the same thing with you Jake, you know, this is just one year and, you know, I think being brand new to the school committee with the situation that we're in right now, I, I think it's the same sort of thing and, you know, I think that it'd be, you know, we'll, we'll need you to step up and, you know, be on these additional committees as soon as next year, right? So I think that's the spirit of what you're doing, right?
I, I think so. I mean, again, this is all collaborative, it's just we have to divide up to conquer some of these. I mean, we just, we have to do that, so.
Probably volume of meetings is helpful to understand, we probably have four or five meetings of each of the subcommittees over the course of the year unless there's something really hot. And I would anticipate there's going to be less facilities work that goes into Brook Street. I mean, that's, we already have a contract that's going to execute to tell us what needs to happen.
Right.
From a physical plane, uh, physical, it's really going to be the politics of what is the school committee, which constituents is the school committee going to be in support of when we get into the controversial conversation over how enhanced should that field be? And I offer that only because I know that there are very different perspectives on what should happen over there. And at some point, the school is going to associate with one or two of the different positions. So that's going to be some heavy this group work in terms of, you know, what happens when the lights discussion comes up? Is the school asking for lights or is the community asking for lights and where does that fall? So that I see is a big part of that discussion, big part of that group's discussion, but this committee's decision-making tree in the near future.
And you'll have input and discussion and everything with all of this, right?
Yeah, I'm not worried about any of that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Still good Jake?
Yep.
Okay, so that being the case, should we rerate it out just for officialness or you got it all?
I think you need to, like, put the slate up for emotion. I think you need to, like, put the slate up for emotion.
Okay.
And then have everybody vote.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion that our facilities subcommittee be represented by Teresa Whitman and Matt Harrington? That our finance subcommittee be represented by Anna Lynn Mitchell and Teresa Whitman? Our policy subcommittee be represented by Erica Spencer and Jake Foster? And our negotiation team be represented by Chris Reed and Kate Koch-Senquist?
I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We did it. We did a thing. And so with that, I will turn it to Pam for the superintendent's report.
I can be brief, or I'll try to be as brief as possible, because I know.
Take your time, I could eat some snacks.
Please keep eating.
So many still for you, Sarah. Isn't that the best seat in the house? I just need to make this seeable for folks at home. Do we have folks at home at this point?
Did they give up? Or is Nina still with us?
Can we add a tech subcommittee to run them?
Yes, that'll be discussion.
I'm just listening. If you don't wanna put it on the screen, that's fine.
You know, and Gail, I will send it to you. It'll just take one step. Very briefly, I echo your sentiments. This has been a fantastic graduation week. Just wonderful sentiment, the speeches by Lucas and our, our teacher rep were just fantastic. And I just think it was wonderful to have, it was just the whole senior week was great upbeat and people were really thrilled to kind of be back in the swing of things. So we had a graduation last year, this one felt real and felt full. I thought it didn't feel real last year, but it felt more true to form. So we're very happy about that. Sadly, in the middle of all of it, we had the, the shooting in Texas, which I feel like we're pretty well-prepared here to manage both the emotion of, of a distant issue. And then we are prepared, should anything darken our door. I don't know that, well, anyone will be totally, I mean, we've been counseled by police and fire that you train, but until you're in the moment, you really never know what's going to happen. But that being said, we have, just as a reminder, safety teams in each building and a district-level team that meet, the district-level team meets quarterly with the police and fire reps from both towns of Essex and Manchester. The plan is written in cooperation with them, and they practice with us throughout the year. So it's something that's jointly known, understood, reviewed, and done on a regular basis. We start the year with a, with a primer for kids. We typically schedule our drills in the spring to work with our partners that we use for off-site. So I feel that we are confident in term, we are confident in the fact that we have written plans and procedures to follow, should we ever need to use them. COVID, we are gonna sunset the dashboard. They've been trying to keep up with it, instead of putting up a two, a two-leaf category for June. I think, right now, people aren't reporting as much. It's just kind of the, it's, the horse is out of the barn, we're onto the new frontier. And all indicators right now are that we'll just start the school as normal next year. If we get anything from Desi in August that says differently or something happens in August that causes them to need to act differently, I think if you're all comfortable, we'll just continue with our process of aligning to guidance as it comes out. And we'll keep people informed if anything drastic changes last day of school, six twenty-one.
Yay.
Is it a half-day that day?
It is, and at least in Essex, it's an abbreviated, slightly less than a half. Or maybe it's just barely.
So I'll be honest, we have ongoing debate whether eleven-thirty or eleven-forty-five is doable for the bus turnaround, and it's likely eleven-forty-five because we need a forty-five-minute window in between. Eleven o'clock marks the end of school day.
Is Friday also a half-day, the preceding Friday at the high school?
At the high school.
And Sunday is no school.
Monday is just...
Half-day, no.
So.
It's a wacky setup.
It's a very wacky setup, because we went into the next week with a long weekend, so it'll be interesting. It'll be interesting to see how many people fully hang in till the end, but there's fun events. So we've got, I've got a little note, we've got our moving-on ceremonies happening the end of next week, which usually keep kids pretty excited.
Sarah's explaining about it.
For people to... This is why it's so important to tune into your local school committee. I just threw, we don't have to go deep in the weeds on this tonight, or we can, if that's the preference of the group. But a couple of frequently asked questions around faculty attendance and private school attendance has come up. We've hit the private school attendance, but seeing as everyone's here, we can touch on it. Ian has been working some numbers for, is, things just are not changing? Hold on. I'm on a whole different...
Are you on a different side?
Yeah. Bring that down.
This is not...
No. So faculty attendance, what we know is that we're averaging in the mid-nineties for district-wide attendance throughout the year. You see the full-year average at the end. So we're right around the ninety-two to ninety-five percent district-wide faculty attendance. This doesn't account for TAs or non-Meda staff. It runs, different buildings at different point in the time have experienced highs and lows, but still all in the, all in the ninety percent range. This does not account for defined leave, so people who have applied for and been granted formal leaves of absence, this is people who will call in on a given day, whether it be a sick day, bereavement day, a jury day, a health day. So I know there's a feeling and a discussion that attendance is a problem. It's not too far or off-normal. At ninety to ninety-five percent, that would be about, at ninety percent, it's about fourteen to fifteen people out district-wide per day. And that's not to say we don't have hotspots where there is individual or groups of individuals who may be more excessive than the, than the averages for the building or the district. We'll have to handle that individually. And we do have, we have, I believe, eight to ten leaves this year, which may be exacerbating the feeling that our typical teaching staff isn't here and available. So can't really get into all of the different leaves and who's there.
Historically, is that, that's higher than usual?
I've run the numbers, spot-checking in the past, and we run about ninety-four percent.
No, in terms of the number of leaves?
The last few years, it's really been, it's been elevated.
So ninety-four percent is an average attendance, right?
Yeah, the, the far end shows you your, your year average for district, high school, middle school, Essex and Memorial.
Right, why is district lower?
Yeah, as you say, the data looks, the data doesn't...
If the rest of them are all, when you look at the year column, you see district is somewhere around ninety-three percent. And everyone else who comprises a district is at ninety-one percent.
May doesn't, may doesn't make sense either.
So some, something...
That average would have to be higher for, the district average would have to be higher if Memorial was that high.
Well, no, because the middle high school's so much...
I think district average is off throughout, because you're seeing a lower number than all of the contributing numbers for a bunch of the different ones.
See what you're saying.
Last, Ian to take another look at it.
But could you just repeat for me this?
Well, what I'm saying is based on this data set, so I think we'll just hold any further discussion of it.
Could you repeat the number of leaves of absence that aren't included in the ninety-four percent?
I will go back and check that.
Out of order, Sarah. Wolf is not recognized by the chair, sorry.
Every leave is, has a teacher replacement, so our teaching staff is about one sixty. Well, heads counted in this. Remember, we're counting people per building per day, which means if I'm a five, a half percent in one building and a half percent in another, I'm a person in each building.
But when a leave is covered by a teacher who's already in the building?
That may exacerbate some, the feeling that attendance is an issue, because if the person who's covering is then out right now, you've got two different faces covered.
I think some of this might be around in there too, like, the district average, because...
Yeah, the numbers are...
Not as much as like ninety, it's like difference between ninety and ninety-one is more or less enough to really move that needle? I think that's what you were saying.
January is funky, March is funky.
Question, so do we wait for the next meeting to confirm the data and we look at this again? Or you actually sent out an email to confirm?
I can send out an email, okay.
In instances where we do have absences, the, the daily kind, not, not the leave of absence kind, what is the current policy, to the extent there is one, about substitutes?
We try to find substitutes when we can. If we can't find external substitutes, then they'll pull people from in the building, if available, to do coverage. TAs, monitors, other teachers who may have a break. That's K eight at the high school. The daily sub-coverage is done by auditorium. Kids are sent to the auditorium with their Google Classroom assignments. We moved to that several years ago because we have a subs shortage. And we hold other districts and high schools, and this was a common way that they managed it at the high school because of the independence level of the kids. And it frees up more of the people to serve at K eight, where kids are less capable.
Right, so just to clarify, it's not that we're not hiring the sub, it's not that we're trying to save money by not hiring subs for high school, it's that we are hiring those subs and placing them in the elementary schools where the students are less independent. So.
Because we've had a subs shortage for many years.
And so this isn't even a COVID, this isn't derived from COVID. We have never tried to have subs at the high school level.
Yes, we have tried to have subs at the high school level.
For the last several years, so we have been doing the auditorium.
We had the auditorium for a couple of years. Subs have been very hard to start any subs.
And so, I, I guess, and this is a subject for a different meeting, but where now we are facing five-day quarantine, and so obviously a new evolution, where it's not a choice, it's mandated.
Yep.
People are gone for the five days. Is there any thought given to addressing that differently? At the high school level, what I see amongst high schoolers is kids often not being engaged, not being in class, not feeling like they need to be, because if they've spent five days in an auditorium, a lot of them aren't. So I wonder if we could, I don't know how this is done at this level, but if I can somehow put a pin in this issue that we return to thinking about how to deal with quarantines in a way that is in keeping with our model.
So if you had to sum up, the problem we're trying to solve is?
Well, as related to this issue, I think there's two, two separate things. One thing is a feeling, and this may be a perception, but a feeling at the high school that fewer people are in the building. I can't explain it, I can't tell you exactly why, but I can tell you that if you talk to enough high school parents, you will hear this reiterated over and over again, that people are absent a lot. You know, these, these numbers don't appear to support it, so I'm not really sure where this is coming from, but I can say anecdotally, I, I feel like I'm observing it. So that's, that's one issue, and how, how do we, how do we inspire our educators to feel both supported and also to want to be here every day, even though many of them, I am sure, are so burnt out? I'm sure people are burnt out, I know kids are burnt out, you know, everybody's burnt out. But so how, how do we kind of come back next year? And...
How do we try and improve it?
Yep, yep.
How do we reset? And on, on the second issue, which is I think...
Maybe just a little more data that we need or something like that, right? Maybe it's data specific to the high school.
I do see it more as...
Yeah. Just like being a parent of a fifth and a second grader then, like, I haven't really noticed that like we notice at the middle in the high school. I haven't particularly noticed at Memorial, and maybe just a bit more information on that would be helpful as well.
Recognizing as a committee that there are, you know, where she mentioned that there are hotspots at this week, you can only go so close in, in telling us what those hotspots are, because these are personnel issues as well, right? So we, we can't really get too deep into that at this level, because there are privacy concerns for employees. So, I mean, Pam and I, we know what level they can take it to, but we have to, as a committee, recognize that we don't have access to all of that information quite as in-depth as we might like.
Yeah. So Erica, could you finish the second part to that?
The second part, I think, is maybe just related to how we deal with COVID quarantines, both on the part of students and on the part of faculty, that there has to be a way that we can keep everyone more engaged. I mean, we've been through remote learning, God, help, help us, I don't ever want to go back to that. But I know my fifth grader sat home, fifth grader, oh my God, I have a seventh, he's now in seventh grade. He was in fifth grade when COVID started. He's now in seventh grade. Sat home very recently with COVID, where he was perfectly healthy for five days and played, I don't know, a hundred and seventy hours of Xbox. There has to have been a better way to keep him engaged in the classroom. And I know there was a lot of frustration during remote learning and hybrid learning that educators were really challenged by the need to try to teach to two sets of kids. I think this presents a different challenge and one that's more easily solvable, that Chase could have been zooming into a classroom for some of that, not taking away attention from the kids that were there, or not requiring extra attention from the teacher, but simply getting off the darn Xbox and listening to what was happening in class. And I think the same goes on the educator's side, that I don't think five days in an auditorium should be, I, I don't know what we do if we can't find any subs, but given how often faculty were out this year with COVID.
So if it's an extended absence, a day or two more, there's always an attempt to bring in a sub. We may not get the sub.
So what I'd like to do right now is bringing this back to what we're doing right now, which is the, the, a quick update on faculty attendance. I'd like to redirect that kind of discussion that we do have in the agenda when we discuss the school committee calendar, like our school committee calendar, that there is a section there for school committee topics for sub, for study, to, to make suggestions and put. That's where that, that...
This, this kind of helps to ask a question and not just produce the data. And then the other, just kind of hit the FAQ, was we've discussed this before, but the question that keeps coming up about private school attendance, we won't have what this rising ninth-grade class will look like until the fall, until we have all the, the ins and outs calculated. But our numbers are pretty steady over the years in terms of private school attendance. And if you just run the eighth to ninth grade, which was a question, so the number of students who were in private school in eighth grade and the change when they moved to ninth grade, that is a quick historical.
That's helpful. Thank you for the update.
So just, a quick, just a quick question in terms of process. Are these typically in our packets? Or, I mean, it would be helpful to have had a chance to look at, you know, data tables like this. Are the, do you typically send these out, or are these typically presented here for the first time?
If we're using it for an agenda, key agenda item, they'd go out ahead. This was just kind of a, questions that have come up over the past two weeks, I thought I'd tuck them into my notes.
Because this is superintendent's report, so this is just her responding to the things that have come up, rather than an agenda item.
If you want to move anything to an official agenda item, you can take it at the end and put it on an upcoming agenda for further discussion.
Yep, didn't, didn't you think that you had the numbers for class of twenty-five, or did I misunderstand last time?
That's this year's eighth grade, so...
Class of twenty-five is this year's ninth grade. I'm, I'm only fairly confident of that, because I have one.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, so...
So this year's...
This year's ninth grade, we know how many of them are no longer with us.
I don't have that data yet, and I have through twenty, so. That's what, I'm giving you what I have, I don't have it, didn't get it from our last conversation, so.
Okay. I just, I, I was thinking that maybe it, fall of twenty-two seems late for the fact that they're already in, in school, I assume.
We run the, we get, throughout the year, we get reporting on who's attending private school, and we get the report finalized in the spring. So my list, I get like a list of heads, like names of kids where they're attending, and we have to go through and create a data chart from that. These aren't reports that exist in a regular report out, they're kind of, they're being done as we speak. We haven't had a data, we have a data person now. We have not had a data person until, up until last year. So there's just a whole system of reporting that could be improved on, that we're happy to do now that we have people in place.
Quick peek at just the stats because I have some of the raw data here. I think for broader questions, it probably does make sense to come back later, but I can just see on the district number, there was one small glitch in the sum of the total. And once I corrected that, the, the district number is right where the other averages on. So it's just the, the sum total. So it looks like it's just that district num. And, and they look like a big difference, but they're all at ninety-four and that one's at ninety-three. And it just was, had one number that was off, so. We'll take a look with Ian at the full data set to make sure there aren't other issues, but it's that full year number in blue that looks a little lower on the left, under the year column, that once you tweak that little formula error, it's right line, should be. So not seeing other things that are wrong here, but we can, there might be, and we'll take a look and scrub it just to triple check, so. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your superintendent's report, Pam.
No problem. I made a major faux pas already, and because I was making all my notes in the subcommittee reports section, I bypassed the consent agenda with Avi, I'm certain, notice.
I, I know, I was so ripped by the conversation that I, I, I was just, so I'm sorry.
No. So as a reminder to our, our committee and our new members especially, we handle non, generally non-controversial routine matters by consent agenda, agenda to streamline things. So right now we have some warrants, we have acceptance of warrants for vouchers ten sixty through ten sixty-three, and then we have a number of sets of minutes. And I had sent an email about the minutes.
I don't have an answer yet.
Okay. So maybe should we sep, yeah, we should separate that out. So the, the issue that I noticed is that we, if you aren't in attendance at a meeting, we wouldn't vote to approve the minutes for that meeting. And the meeting from April twenty-fifth only had two of us at that meeting, so we couldn't actually.
So I was actually at that meeting and it said I was not at that meeting.
That was the one right before town meeting. Okay. All right. Good to note. That is, that is a change. So why don't we separate out that set of minutes? Because I believe we have form to adopt the other. Yeah. So, and the other thing is that the expectation when the packet goes out is that we, Jake caught this right away, is that we have the opportunity in advance to ask our questions by email to Pam and Avi of those items in the consent agenda. If you have questions about minutes, questions about the warrants, things like that, so that when we come here, the discussion is minimal and this is a more streamlined approach. So thank you for doing that in advance. So that being the case, does anyone want to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as proposed, including vouchers ten sixty through ten sixty-three and the minutes as proposed, with the exception of removing out the minutes from April twenty-fifth?
I think we need to separate those because we have to abstain and us new folks have to abstain on the minutes.
Thank you. Okay. So do we have to move to separate?
Do vouchers, just do vouchers and then give me.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion to approve vouchers ten sixty through ten sixty-three?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Great.
All in favor who are. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. And then of the four of us who were here for this, would anyone like to make a motion to approve these sets of minutes excluding the April twenty-five set?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Those carry. Consent agenda is complete. Do you want subcommittee reports? I feel like we've covered pretty much everything.
We have a little turf field business to do.
Okay. Then let us, let us turn to our subcommittee reports from our private, prior subcommittee representative, particularly for the turf field.
Yes. So there was some emails back and forth with Jason, but we didn't meet as a subcommittee over the past two weeks, so. You know, I have a general understanding of the path forward, but instead can definitely fill in, you know, Matt a little bit on that. I'm sure you can as well, so.
Yeah, and maybe I could just.
Add a little color.
Would it be okay? So I just want to go through a couple of things. At the last school committee meeting, we just provided an update on the timeline for the process, just for the big picture. We've got a design firm, they're called, their name is Gail Associates, they do a ton of these fields. And they're now beginning the process of advising us on what the turf solution that we want to put out to bid should be, using their experiences. So in the last school committee meeting, we talked about the fact that as they begin the process of design development, one thing we need to all, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of is that our plan is to replace the turf fields that we have. We can talk about changes in, in configuration of turf. Mostly that will come based on recommendation. There could be conversations about price. I think we would have the opportunity to bring any of those questions back. For example, things like infill, which people talk about, et cetera. But because we're assuming that we're replacing the turf as is, we have been assuming all along, we're not talking about any discussion of converting back to a grass field. Clearly, that's one of those strategic conversations that lots of communities have. Our district kind of had them ten years ago, but we wanted to let the school committee know that from a timeline standpoint, what we're really trying to do is make sure we hit the summer twenty-twenty-three timeframe to get something implemented. What we learned from this year was that due to supply chain and backlog, you got to get on the, you know, a contract with the contractor early enough that you're in line essentially. Because this summer, they were fulfilling orders from two years ago that got canceled during COVID. So that's kind of just important that we're managing timelines. So I have a quick timeline update. Before I get there, I just want to finish the business from last meeting, which was that what school committee asked us to go back and get information on is could we get information related to the pros and cons of grass and turf? Just so if we get questions, we can answer them, not because anyone at the time was requesting that we go a different direction. So that, we did get the information from Gail. It was circulated to the subcommittee. We haven't had a chance to meet. We'll have, you know, a chance to do that if we want, but either way, unless there is desire to switch course, we would need to do that ASAP. We had said last meeting in the next few weeks. So I do think that we kind of need to be ready at this point to make some of those conversations happen. For those who are, might be listening in the audience, you know, the, the highlights on turf versus grasses. There's nobody.
Just Nina and Gail.
Okay, great.
They might listen on recording. That's true.
Is basically, you know, the cost ends up being somewhat similar with higher installation costs for turf, but higher maintenance costs for grass. And there is quite a more robust need for maintenance with grass. The other big difference is playable time. And there's a lot of downtime associated with weather with grass fields, as well as the fact that you have to periodically just leave them alone and not play on them just so they can grow during growing season. So again, that's the type of information, we have more robust information. We can meet as a subcommittee to discuss it, but I would be happy to circulate it to the broader school committee so you can see, in case you ever get any questions. Just wanted to make sure we took the temperature today so that we can continue down that timeframe of being ready to get them doing design development work. So I guess before we move on to the rest of the timeline, any comments about that?
Can I just say, I, I want you to make your comments, but this will be a good example of how within a subcommittee, the, the information was distributed to us. We had a chance to review it. We didn't meet as a subcommittee, but we were able to review it, digest it, ask our questions if needed and everything. And so we come to you to share, you know, our outlook and opinion based on what we've already received and then.
Yeah. And the only difference I would say in this case is that typically there will be things that we bring to this group for a vote. So, and that can be, you know, to proceed with the design. And so you would get a lot of information, you get to deliberate, et cetera. In this case, what's different is that there has been discussion for three, five years now about replacements. So it's more just confirming that nobody is having any concerns with that road. Whereas later, we're going to have decisions with voting and all that kind of stuff. So are we in the right frame of mind on that or any questions or concerns?
Yes.
Chris, maybe you'll address this, but is there any ability for any town body to step in and say, you can't do turf because we're concerned about the watershed, et cetera?
Yeah. So with Highland Field, that is a hundred percent owned by the school, right? So that, that is a school field, so we don't require any input by the town for replacement of that. Brook Street is very different because that is partially owned by the town. And as far as I'm aware, everything that I've seen, there are no like concom issues with Highland at all. And especially since we're simply replacing an existing structure and I don't, you know, this might change a little bit, right? But I don't know, you know, maybe there are, you know, changes to maybe stands or something. You know, we can debate that at a later point, but as far as everything I've seen so far, you know, there would be no requirement to go for the town except to help us pay for it as part of our budget. That's the big, big, huge thing. And then just my observation and, and, you know, versus grass versus turf, because I do know that it came up at our last meeting. The number one factor for me on that, after reading through the email, was the playability time. We already have a huge shortage of field space and time in town. And if we were to even consider moving back to a grass field, that would severely impact that. And I think for that reason alone, you know, based off of, you know, you know, there really are no cost savings. If anything, I think in our case, turf would actually be a little more cost effective as well. Even if we were starting from scratch and the fact that, you know, converting back to grass would then be a significant additional cost, it just seems to make zero sense to me, so.
And for context, the reason this even came up is simply because we were having some really detailed budget discussions. And so people think, you know, well, would it be better, would it be cheaper just to, to put grass back in? So that was what brought this question forth in the first place, after a few years of planning for this replacement.
About $200,000 estimate ballpark to just convert because of different drainage, different, you know, unique soil, putting, you need to regrade, a lot of, a lot of changes. Whereas a rug replacement and infill is, is a simpler process, even though it's, it's still costly. So any other questions before we move on to timeline? So here's why timeline is important, because knowing that, and I know maybe we haven't talked about timeline for future meetings, but again, trying to begin with the end in mind, the goal right now from the design firm is to have essentially have an award and bid done by December, January timeframe, so we can lock in a contractor for summer. There's lead time and there's also them filling up their schedule. So the goal is to get a contractor, a bid award by the end of December with potentially contract negotiations in January. This is what we're getting from Gail, based on the fact that they do a lot of these and they know what the pipelines like. And they, they were the first people to tell us, even though you planned ahead, summer twenty-two, it's kind of too late. So with that in mind, what needs to happen before then? You would basically release a bid at the beginning of November. To do that, you need bid specifications and like construction documents. So to do that, that would be finalized in October. That has to be finalized after you go through the permitting process that Chris was talking about, going to Conservation Commission. From what we've heard from them, it should be simpler than when we built this the first time, but we also know that Brook Street at least is in a sensitive area and this project all came under their purview as well. So if they're estimating, that is a two-month process, August and September would be the concept there. And so we really want to go into permitting with some, with one really key decision made, which is around infill. And so we haven't really begun discussing that with them, but they are very experienced. And this is the type of question that comes up very frequently in lots of communities. So we asked them to get us some information so we can start to review it. My, my suggestion would be that we bring this to the subcommittee for a preliminary review and then bring it back to school committee. So school committee could say, we've had a vetting. We could bring in Gail to come here and answer questions if it is at that level of interest. Is there more experience on it? And so to get that August, September permitting timeframe, we really want to have a summer decision on infill and want to make sure that we have all the information and all the time to ask questions. So depending on when the school committee meeting would be, that's when I would like to suggest that we go through that. And if we could maybe get the subcommittee beforehand to kind of review the data so they've got the right questions and that they can bring what they feel is a complete request here, we can work out the details. How, how does that sound?
That sounds.
What would the actual timing be though? Because we have.
We don't have.
Stay tuned.
That, right, that's coming up on the agenda.
Once we settle on the school committee calendar of meetings, then we can align this.
So they said to us, in like a perfect world, hey, maybe mid-July we'll have a, I said, well, hang on. We got to go to the school committee and figure out what their dates are. I don't know. So there is, the schedule is not razor tight. They don't have some play between, I think they said originally July eighteenth was their. We don't have a preference when they would ask us to know, but they, there is some wiggle room in there, not a ton. So I think that's why I'm saying we can get something done sometime over the summer, even if it's mid-August or whatever. I think that would be helpful.
So can I ask a question then? So what's helpful to have, I mean, would it be helpful? Maybe to, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about this, how involved in this do we actually really need to be? And so, I mean, if, if we can come to some sense of general understanding that yes, we're, we're moving forward with the turf replacement versus grass, that sort of thing. But then beyond that, how much do you need? Like, do we really need to be involved? I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
I mean, I'm not a show expert.
Right. Like, we hire people.
So it's, it's a political and financial question at some point. Different inputs have different price tags. Okay, so that's one issue. I think that that would be important for school committee to be aware of. Once we put it out to bid, we're going to get a price for the whole thing and we're going to take it or not take it, but it is that the price is the price. We've been kind of previewing our best guess based on the information we have of how much we need in our capital planning process for that. But we haven't been talking about differentiation in infill. It could, it could be five to six figures for sure. I don't know much more than that, so I don't want to get over, you know, my skis right now. But I think those are some of the reasons. Plus, in general, you do get questions in the community about these types of things. So I do think it's useful to at least have a public opportunity for people to ask questions and hear how those decisions are being made. Whereas normally with a lot of facilities project, to your point, it's very much handled at administrative level because there isn't as much interest about the boiler specifications. It's just make sure there's heat. So that's my answer to that. Does that help?
That's very helpful. Yes, thank you. So do we want to, just to make it very easy and clear, would you like to make a recommendation about the, the grass versus?
I would think if we need to. What we need the community to do is confirm that this new body does not have a different vision of what a replacement of a turf is. Because had this been this time last year, we would just be moving forward with replacing exactly what's out there with the newest version of it. We're aware that very different board, so if there's a different desire for a different outcome, we just need to know it. Otherwise, we'll proceed.
But I'm not hearing anything to that effect.
No, no. Neither am I. Well, I just want to hear, yeah.
A simple check.
It's just information.
Because the timeline is important, that's all.
So is there anyone here who feels a strong need to move in a different direction than what we have already established as the path forward here?
Which is replacing the turf field with the new turf.
Sounds like a no. Excellent. We are agreed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, great. So I think the timeline was the only other thing. I think we can talk offline, subcommittee, about when we might be able to get together. It does, you know, we'll figure out the school committee dates, but it sounds like directionally, we're in a good path. And they've been through a lot of these types of questions before. I think we are, so far, I've been very pleased with what I've been seeing from them in terms of their skill, competency, knowledge, experience, all that stuff. So competence, not competency. Anyway, thank you.
Can I make a request actually? Just because I do know that Erica has, you know, a lot of connections with a lot of parents that care deeply about this, could we get her some of like the initial stuff from Gail?
I've got the Gail.
You do, okay.
I've got the Gail report, yep. Sent to me three times today. I was saying I've gotten parents who says, you've seen this, right? No, it's, it's an, it's an import. I was going to say, when it comes to infill and things like that, is there any reason why, as you say, you're not an infill expert? I mean, I'm certainly not, but there might be some community members who, who are, like, do we have to do all that? Like, is there ever a time to say like, hey, Donna First, are you listening? Like, somebody who's been highly invested in the process, like, can you help? Can you, can you sit and listen? Or do we just not do that as a school committee?
We have an entire team of hired professionals to manage that process. So typically, political and financial decisions will rest here and the execution will rest at the school level. So we would hire, because we're a large public agency with concerns about everybody's safety and ensuring that it's done right, we will hire the agency like Gail to come in and make.
Oh gosh, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we don't hire an agency. My point was only when it comes to choosing the infill or something like that, that Teresa and Chris were indicating, they don't have a lot of, you know.
It's probably just like, my guess is like, it's like, you know, option A, option B, option C, three different prices. They explain, they. They explain, they explain the options and then we just kind of get informed by.
Well, I, I think there's something more to what you're saying too though, and I will tell you from my experience. I will absolutely um, ask for opinions from community members who know about things and who are, who are well versed in things and well connected with things. When I have to make a decision about it. So that's really the time that we do that. We don't, we don't officially necessarily bring on community members unless there's a task force situation. Um, unless we've set up a task force for that. But as an individual, you know, school committee members, it's our job to make sure that we're understanding what our community has to, to bring to the table.
Yeah, so it'd be one of our jobs to go and maybe seek out and see if anyone does have anything about this. Of course, people can always listen to our meetings when, and it's all publicly available information. If they have a strong opinion, they can make a public comment about that as well, so.
We often don't need to seek them out. They find us. People who care often find us. Okay. Okay, uh, alright, well, that is the facilities subcommittee report. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, we do not have a finance subcommittee report. We have not met as a collaborative team yet. Now that we have reorganized, we can forward looking at those things. Policy subcommittee, Kate is our lone.
I know that Avi had put the food services contract on there. I'm, I'm not sure where we are on that timeline.
Just got, uh, the timeline has uh, been stretched just due to a little bit of backlog in my office.
Can I just ask why contracts are under policy rather than negotiation?
Uh, great question. Contracts in general are not under any particular one. So for example, facilities might have some contracts. This one was policy because of the discussion around what type of food service program we want to have. As well as, uh, there are some food service program, uh, policies that are there, they're minor. But they sometimes, uh, you know, I wouldn't say minor, they're minor relative to the bid process. So it, it's more because of the, what type of program do we want to have? There have been questions about should we go with buy-ups, uh, higher level of quality? How do we get current rental input? We did a survey. So it was more about getting um, uh, input as to whether we wanted to change policy around what type of district program we wanted to have. That's my understanding.
That's mine as well. And there's an entire wellness policy that's tied into.
Yeah. And the wellness policy might be.
And negotiation team? We had the update effectively.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes. Best of luck and may the odds be ever in your hair. Okay, we've had superintendent's report. Onto continued business fiscal year twenty-three, school committee calendar.
This is actually the number one thing in my superintendent's report. Cause I feel like until we work this out then, there's a lot of.
Everything else.
Lot of other decisions hinge on it. So we've been doodling and it looks like the. We don't, wouldn't have a quorum for the twenty-first or we would have a war, just slightly a war. We can take that up separately because that's finishing off the year. August second, we don't have a full complement to do a retreat. The first day we have a full complement of people would be August sixteen. You're not available.
I'm not either. I sent that to. I'm out of town. See, so while she's bringing this up, this brings up just a general thing. I'll just speak to the generalities that. First, it's first and third, right? First and third Tuesdays are, are standing meetings. Um, our, our calendar does generally start in August. We take most of July off, subcommittee certainly me. Um, but first and third, uh, are, are standing meetings. Um, and then of course we have the proposed calendar of what those meetings will cover for the upcoming year. And um, what we'll probably do uh, at our retreat is talk a little bit about other things. Um, to give us some context also about like the multi-year look at the different things that we cover, you know, across a few different years. Um, but the, the August retreat, it's the one time that we uh, meet for a, a more extended training. Um, with, particularly with Dorothy Presser, if we can get her, which is really important. And that's the time where we're able to set our school committee goals, we're able to really um, come to some operating norms, uh, set. Really set the vision as a team for moving forward. So on the off chance that, that August, just generally speaking, seems unappealing. To, to have like a half day or four day meeting, I just want to put out there that um, it, it is really in our best interest as a team. To find some consensus on a, on a date that we can make this happen. I know we all have our own limitations, I know that, but just putting that out there in case it's like, well, I might go away, that sort of thing. Just something to consider that this is, this is a once, um, once a year that it happens, you know, for a big daytime meeting like this. So just know that we're not going to ask you to do it again in December or.
But it is happening on the second, but we're not sure.
We're trying to find a date. So the second had a, a number of people and I believe at least maybe two of them were new people. Who couldn't attend, and so that wasn't going to be a viable option.
Pam, do you want to use the one I sent my responses on?
If you want to give me your responses, it's going to be easier for me.
No, she.
You gave me a series of Tuesdays, right? So was this a yes?
Um, I'll have to open up the one I sent you actually.
You can correct my sixteen, it should be enough.
So I can't connect to my school committee email.
I, and I'm not, don't think it's wise for me to bring up email with all the sharing and everything because there's a lot in there. So while this is kind of not a fun act, activity to do with a large group in a public session. We're kind of, our hands are a bit tied with forward planning until we can come up with.
Okay, I can, so I'll, I'll try and recreate this. Um, the problem is I did the one at home using my ca, my calendar, which I don't have.
I'm going to try to pull it up on my phone and.
Okay.
And help out that way.
Well, I do, do you guys get your school committee emails to forward onto your, into your inbox?
Yeah.
Somebody can tell they do not.
Yeah, I, I do not too. I just have a, a web app on my phone.
Yeah, I did that too, yeah.
Better off that way.
Yeah.
Because for replies, it makes a difference.
Yeah. Um, I think I can do it.
Sorry, I think Pam, the mornings are always just better than the afternoons. Like whatever day it is, it's just the mornings better.
Okay.
It may be.
So I'm, if you want me to tell you, if it's faster to just tell you, I think I can do it.
I've got you for eight two.
Yes, I'm a yes e- either time. I'm a no for the next two weeks, so. That could free up if my son officially decides not to call.
Tuesday, the second of the morning, and Mark.
So Matt, is there any chance of you being able to make that Tuesday morning?
Be in California.
You'll be in California. Okay, this is good to know, but you're.
Yeah, I have a week in California.
Okay. And then, then the next be- best opportunity appears to be the sixteenth.
I'm out of town.
I mean, that's the closest I attended last year's.
Right.
I mean. And I've been on the other side of it with Fox.
I'm a yes on the twenty-third, Pam.
So the no's on the sixteenth, I'm sorry, Anna and Erica are those definite no's?
I think we should go for the second.
I think we, if we go for the second, I've, I've found Dorothy very, very helpful and willing to work. Around my schedule for charting the course and reaching out to me specifically. And I'm sure that she would do the same with Matt to update him on anything that had changed.
Yeah, I'm not so worried about. Yeah, I'm not so worried about the, a, a change, honestly. The, the main priority for this again is just the idea of this is going to be our group setting the tone for the year that we serve together. You know, for the upcoming year. And so if we can make it on a time when we can all be there, then great. If we can't, then we got to go with the, you know, least available damage.
I will. I will harmonize with the whatever tone you just asked me.
But just to ask the question, on the sixteenth, is there any chance of, uh, so Anna and Erica, are you guys like out of town the sixteenth?
Out of town.
Okay, I've got it. So it looks like that may be the only option.
I am available on the twenty-third, but it looks like other people aren't.
You don't have to do a Tuesday. There are just other things that scheduled. I can go back and take a round and try to find some other days.
So one benefit of having it earlier in the month is that number one, we have some things to, that need to be done before that. And the other thing is that if we, I mean, if we, if we did put it off till the sixteenth or, or, or later. Then um, then we're running the likelihood of having a business meeting that first Tuesday of the month. Before we've had a chance to actually do that work together, so um. Well, I hate it for you, Matt. You can feel free to um, video in. You can call in and listen.
Disneyland?
Disneyland.
Four to two year old?
It'll be equally.
It might actually be more relaxed.
Does that work for you?
All of my availability on there.
I know, but I mean.
We'll make it work.
So eight thirty to one P M?
So, yeah, that one says ten. What does that one say? Oh, it doesn't, okay.
I know. Where is it gonna be? It's gotta be. Oh, great.
Oh, because it's a retreat. Still had the same question. Yeah.
Well, actually we got lunch though.
It was really good time.
Yeah, rapture.
I really like this spread. Can we just get this? I'd like the BLT on a stick.
I like those too.
We do breakfast too?
Yes.
Yeah, we did like muffins.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, we have plenty of food. Food's easy.
Is there anything else you wanted to tackle about the, oh, the, the twenty-first?
We're running into a similar issue with the twenty-first. If we're good to go on the sec, if we're going to have two meetings in August and do the bulk of our prep work on the second. I think we can move the items from the twenty-first onto those two agendas and just separate them out.
Yeah, wait, sorry, I think I missed something. We are having two meetings in August.
The second and the sixteen.
Okay, yeah. But the, with the second being one of them, got it?
Twenty-first would just be really tough on the line.
It's going to be a tight turnaround here too. I mean, yeah. We're off schedule, way off schedule. So it, we will make it work whatever we come up with, but based on this, it looks like. I'm going to miss three people. So it's up to you guys.
We won't have a quorum, so um, so I'm going to go with that won't work.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh yeah, because we don't.
I know, I'm looking at it. It looks like so many yeses.
It's not.
Yes.
We, we plan on you being here, you're fixtures. Okay, so what are the things we absolutely have to make sure happen so that we can do that?
So in order to do this, those who are in the committee from last summer will remember, and we did a lot of it electronically.
Yep.
That we have a signing committee for vouchers during the summer. So to pay the bills and cut the checks, we need people to review and sign off on them. Um, what we've done is typically do, do them as a separate email where we send out all the vouchers that you got in your pocket with the spreadsheet. Everybody gets them, reviews them, has an opportunity to send along any questions. Um, we'll talk about reply all after. Um, and then if you're comfortable with them, we need four people to come in and sign them and then we're free to, to pay the bills.
We can't do DocuSign?
We can do DocuSign.
Yeah.
Yep. Going way back in the time machine.
Is it four people to agree here for majority, but then three decided vouchers? Three decided vouchers.
Okay.
For statute.
Via DocuSign.
Yep. Typically, we just take a vote at the last meeting before we break for summer. That we're going to invoke the signing process and Avi will manage it from there.
Yep.
So we'll take that vote now?
I would.
Yeah, so would anyone like to make a motion to invoke the signing process for our summer vouchers?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain?
My list is.
Yeah. Ends up being every three or four weeks, sometimes two, but in that range. And we'll, we'd like to give you guys time to review though, so. We'll work backwards.
Do we have to define the three people or is it just three of us respond?
So can I ask? We love when everybody responds and has all their questions answered and signs off on it.
Yeah.
But if it's the week where half of you are gone, we really only need three people to be responding to their email so we can pay in the time of that.
So the vouchers are the checks going out.
Correct, it's accounts payable.
So the school committee actually reviews and approves all the check going out?
By statute, school committee must, by, when I say statute, I mean master general law or a call, talk about MGL a lot as an acronym. Um, yes, every time we cut checks, um, school committee must review them first.
So it gets sent to the entire school committee or does the subcommittee, the finance committee actually review?
Not finance committee, subfinance, some, subcommittee does not deal with AP vouchers at all. It is not part of the finance. The finance subcommittee, we talked about before, is a budgetary committee. So it is all school, this is how we've done in the past and if you have ideas, great. But in the past, the whole school committee reviews uh, the vouchers and the warrants, whatever, the bills, um, each time at every meeting. Um, and we send them out in advance, you can review them and ask questions.
Those in your, that's in your packet.
No, I saw that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's every time.
My question is. Like when I'm reviewing the accounts payable and I'm reviewing as a CFO, there's more content to it. So if I just get a voucher of the spreadsheet raw data.
True.
I mean, unless you're a finance person, I would think it's going to be hard for people to understand what we're looking at. So I wonder if presentation wise, it would be easier to kind of link what is the voucher for? And then so the people can actually know what they're approving or reviewing.
Tell me more about what your, what more information you might be looking at.
So there's a lot of the lines, a lot of checks, uh, and it may be because I'm just first time looking at it. Um, I actually don't know. It's hard for me to actually know what I'm approving, what I'm reviewing, other than just say approved, you know, the other check.
The descriptions, oh yes.
Yeah.
Did see the, the content. I'm, I'm just trying to get at. I also think, thought it was hard, my first time through. But I could actually see what the accounts were for and I was just wondering if, if you were saying you couldn't see what they're for. I could see what they're for. What I didn't understand is, was this an unexpected expense?
Exactly.
Was this? Like some tie into this budget. I did see some end calculations.
So usually it would be helpful to have like a budget to actual, what, what timeline is referencing to, uh, other than the description and whatnot. Instead of just reading the raw data.
Hmm, yeah, and typically I haven't seen each bi-weekly voucher tied to a budgetary report. But we have talked about the frequency of budget to actual discussions. And so typically what we'll do is, in the past, we've done two. One prior to the budget season and one at the end of the year. A lot of school committees do quarterly and so those are types of things that we've talked about that we could do. But I'm, I'm not familiar with school districts that do them for every bill pay. Because it's actually pretty, um, just from a, uh, it can be complex to provide the budget to actual report. For each bi-weekly meeting.
Not bi-weekly, but um, do you only do the, uh, the budget to action before quarterly use it?
Well, we've actually done it semi-annually, to be honest. That's what we've, yeah, that's what we've done in the past.
But you close the books every month?
Uh, yes, we do close the books, but the book closing is more from accounting, not from a budget to actual standpoint, correct. I mean, we track budget during the year. Basically, part of the reason why, just to give you a sense, is um, for personnel. You really lock in your personnel at the beginning of the year and so your modifications are minor comparatively. You lock in your health insurance typically after the budget is set. And so typically the heads might vary a little bit, but there aren't quite as many changes. And then the next biggest area of forecasting is added district personnel in terms of variability. And um, that's something that we're, you could do much more frequent analysis. It would not be directionally more accurate. It would be more, what's that? It'd be more um, precise but not more accurate. And so typically our student services director has been able to provide updates a few times during the year in terms of what might be changing with some of that. So I, I think having experience like you in corporate finance as well. I, I can certainly tell you that um, the level of uh, detail and analysis in a corporate setting is a lot higher. Because you have a bigger team. So I, I think typically in a public setting, it's less frequent. But we can, you know, we can do a, you know, whatever the school committee would like. Um, and sometimes it may just be more about also providing updates about what are the budgets, how do they work? So maybe um, sometimes with the finance subcommittee, we've met um, outside of the collaboration group. Just to provide updates on budgetary questions.
Yeah.
How is the budget built? What are the big picture categories? Um, and how does that roll up so that we can, so that the finance submit, subcommittee members feel like they really know what they're approving to your point?
Yeah.
And they know where all fits in. So I'm just giving you the. And they know where all fits in. So I'm just giving you the historical context, but I'm very open.
It's really helpful to hear that as new members. Like, it's, I just, I looked through everything and thought to my, I mean,
It's overwhelming.
For people that have been sitting here, what, have you guys in the last year or more that you've reviewed ever found something that you're like, aha?
Well, so frequently, Avi will put a note with it whenever there's something unusual or off, or he'll put a note that says, this is about in line with what we generally see for this expense line at this point of the year, or this is significantly more, significantly less, and things like that. But I actually very much enjoy going through and seeing, oh, we, we purchased thirty-two cow eyes for the dissection lab and stuff like that. I just, I think it's cool.
And I'll tell you, the way I've used it is, is to have a similar idea, a, a broader understanding of where we, we are, we work at the what level, how that extends to the how level, right? So we, at this level, we approve the budget and we have, we have, you know, discussion, and we have to approve those expenditures because that's the structure of it, but it gives me greater insight into how those funds are being spent. There's, there has not been a circumstance where going through that, I think, well, this is way out of line. If there's a question about something unusual, I'm glad to add you, like, we can always ask it, and Avi's very responsive about that sort of thing. It is a strange dynamic, right? But at the same time, it's, um, it does give us a point of reference for when people have questions about what things are being spent on, and, and when we know the different categories of expense and, and we have that ability to go back and look in greater detail. Um, it's informative, but no, in, in past two whole years that I've been here, there has not been a time, um, because we've spent so much time, noses in budget process, um, where we've had to, where, where going through any of that has been like, oh, aha, you know, there's, there's, there's something to flag here.
And you'll find there are several instances in the school's structure where there is, someone has an oversight role, but not a daily management role. So even like with hiring and firing, right? So I've approved the hires, but the hiring agent is the principal. They're responsible for identifying, interviewing, and making recommendations. I've played kind of the school committee role, which is I check to make sure it aligns with everything we've said we wanted to achieve in this and our policies for hiring. Same thing happens on the backend if somebody's being let go. The whole process of evaluation, determination, and recommendation runs through the principal, and they technically have the final say as long as I approve that it's met all of the requirements. So the budget, in a sense, flows up to the school committee in that way, where all of the details and the daily work gets, um, there's a department to level, there's a school level, then there's the district level. So each level is a check and balance on the next. And when it reaches school committee, it's the top level to make sure we're living within the bounds of the budget, within our responsibilities, and that you kind of get that final oversight before we release checks. But I don't, can't recall in twelve years where we've really gotten into any heavy debates over, like, sometimes there'll be like these Amazon bills that came in that were crazy, and like, what's this? How does that work? And so it's good learning about operations.
I can just call a little bit of a rabbit hole, not, not that, yeah, not that we're not, not that, all helpful questions from your folks, I think it's gonna be hard to explain every single, you know, like, I just wanna move forward. It's tough to get through a fire, so I just wanna make sure there is. Well, I guess the bottom line, yeah, that's fine. I could just say, anytime that we see that there's a budgetary concern, we have to bring it to you as, with as much notice as possible. So that's one thing that you would get. It would be probably in the notes, but certainly we brought up these conversations. We're seeing this, and we do budgetary updates.
Yeah.
We do them probably every two months. We do budget updates, uh, especially during budget season, we're doing it at every meeting. So, um, those are some of the areas where the thematic questions of how the individual line items scroll up might.
Well, in our two meetings in August as well, we're gonna get the annual audit report. So that's done annually, and they come and present to school committee, and we can also cover the treasurer function because that's another kind of checking balance on the budget process, and the treasurer is actually appointed by the school committee and acts as kind of the agent in watch overseer of, um, finance from a school community's perspective for some of the functions. So we can provide you with that job description, and you can get a sense of what that individual's role is.
Okay, so back to the calendar of this, recognizing, um, now that we have nailed down the situation with the twenty first and with the, oh, I'm sorry, that was discussion. We didn't have a vote. We made a motion, didn't we?
Well, we just agreed that we don't have a quorum for the twenty first, so our next meeting will be on the second.
Okay. Oh, okay.
I think you voted in favor of invoking the summer signing.
That's right. We did that. Okay. Got it. So looking at the school committee draft calendar, which is where this conversation started, uh, do we have any, we do need a vote to approve this calendar.
We do.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve the calendar? The school committee calendar for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to approve the school calendar for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty.
School committee calendar.
School committee calendar.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Is there any difference between a full business meeting and a business meeting?
No.
Some of them are full business meetings, and some are.
No, but the agenda is probably full.
I said, I thought it's only infrequently called a business meeting. I thought maybe that meant it was a shorter meeting. Okay. So.
Nope. Nope. Definitely not. Nope.
We discussed last year about trying to keep all of our school committee meetings, uh, our target goal is for two hour max. Um, sometimes that's difficult to achieve, but that is our goal.
And we'll go through that again at the, um, at the, the retreat together.
Can I just make a recommendation to back to what Jake was saying earlier? I would like for any presentation that's gonna be done in the meeting, that we receive the material ahead of time.
Yes. So generally, we do receive the material ahead of time. We've talked about the timing of that, and this is something we can cover in more detail at the retreat because this is exactly the kind of thing we'll be discussing, is how we want to accomplish the next year together. So let's table that until the retreat. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now we get to the budget.
What's it again?
Your end transfers. Avi, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, well, I, I think in light of the really good questions that are helpful, when I hear when people come, it just helps me to come back to things that sometimes I take for granted, so I appreciate your, please continue to do that.
Sure. And before we jump into transfers, what I tried to provide, and I don't know, it was very dense. It's an accumulation of a lot of tutorials we've given on the budget, so it probably was like three. The budget process is, there's some aspects of it which are really simple, but it cannot, it's also the process, the budget process, not the accounting, but the entire process is, it takes some time to digest and to get, understand all of the puts and calls and who owns what piece of it. So what I tried to provide in that is just an overview, and I think what's, what's hard about the timing of coming on right now is that we are closing out the end of the year. So the decisions have been made, processes have been set up. We've been doing things in a certain way that the previous group liked, wanted it done that way. So if you can bear with us with, through this, we can kind of get reorganized over the summer for how you'd like to see it for next year. But what you're gonna hear now is the end of year, you have the budget to actuals, and where we went over in some lines and under in others. It just felt like, I anticipated we might have a little more time so we could get into some of the beginning slides of that tutorial, but I think we'll save that for the summer and maybe try to plan some just workshop sessions to really dig in because I think through the conversation, if you walk away with one thing tonight, we don't solely own the budget process. It's nothing that we generate from the management level. It's really governed by the school, um, the regional schools of Reuben. The timeline, uh, the execution, who determines what, the role of the towns, the apportionment formulas, that's all codified out of our control, but it drives our process and our timeline. So kind of just, we'll put a pin in that, revisit it this summer, but just kind of bear with us for jumping in at the end, and I know you're all yours in summarizing where we're at.
Well, and I don't know if you have the ability to put the, uh, PDF up, but if you looked at our full budget document that we do every year, it's a template. We tried to keep it consistent. It's not necessarily the prettiest thing, but it, it provides a lot of backup pages for by-site. For example, each school has a page. The departments have a page, but it all rolls up to two summary pages for expenses. And those expenses are matched by an equal amount of revenue. So there's really three summary pages to the budget. One is the revenue, where we have the assessments of the town that gets a lot of conversation and discussion, and the other two are the two expense pages. Uh, and so that budget column all the way in the left, we could probably bump it up, you know, a good bit, cuz we'll just go, yeah, thank you. Um, so we have personnel on the top part and operating expenses on the bottom part, and generally, we end up being about two-thirds of personnel and one-third of operating expenses. If you take the health insurance from the operating expenses and you add that to the two-thirds of personnel, you're really looking at about eighty, eighty-five percent uh, staffing benefits, and that's what schools are. We're not really much different than any other school district in that regard. So, um, so this is that, you know, that first column is what was approved, and we just approved the F Y twenty-three budget, and so if you look at the page two and three of that, you would see these headers. These all are basically sum-up lines from all the detail of each page. And so some school committees will use those department of ed account codes and just do a one thousand series transfer and a two thousand series. This provides a lot more detail so that you can see kind of some of the storylines. If I can summarize, I would say the big picture changes that we see at the end of this year are very much in line with what we talked about for the fiscal twenty-three budget. So if you paid, uh, if you were here for some of those meetings, or you're starting to listen in, I know some of you guys were here for those conversations as visitors in the audience, but basically, uh, what are the themes for the fiscal twenty-three budget? Well, we know that we have, um, rising costs in added district placement. We have, uh, in, special ed costs and transportation that, um, that are rising here. We've seen that at the bottom half. We'll show that in a second. And we had this year some savings in the health insurance. Um, next year's health insurance is a little different. It's gonna go back to normal. That, some of the cost savings this year are kind of temporary for reasons that we got into. We've also talked on the staffing level. There's been a lot of questions about, well, what's happening with enrollment, and should uh, staffing be going down over time with that? We do see some, um, savings in the classroom teachers area, a lot of which really doesn't relate in this budget to actual, to this number of people. It's more about, um, changes that happen after the budget. So remember, we set our budget from November through the end of January when school committee votes it. So we're now kind of churning up fifteen months ago's assumption. What happens after that? Well, you have people who might leave in the spring. You have people who leave over the summer. Typically, when we do our budget, we'll do a budget to actual. I was talking about our, our first pass will be after we know all the people who've come and gone for the year. But you can see, you know, with that, say, a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars of savings in classroom teachers, we had a lot of staffing coming and going, and typically, more senior people, if they leave, retire, separate, and you bring in people who might be younger, those can be a lot less costly placements. So, um, and you can see even with that big number of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, it's one point eight percent. So it's not an enormous budgetary change, but it does provide a lot of cash savings. Together with the health insurance, it's helping to fund some of the big changes that are down below. If you could scroll down to the operating expenses, you can see at the, some of the bottom lines here, uh, added district, special education tuition, added district summer, that's up two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. That's a twenty-four percent increase. So even though the dollar numbers are only a little bit bigger on a percentage basis, because this is only a million dollar line item, whereas the classroom teachers is a much bigger line item, it's, it's a much bigger change. We also saw, and we talked about in fiscal twenty-three, how with a lot of growth in added district placements comes also, um, the transportation that's mandated to go with those placements. So every time we send a student to another district, we have to transport them, and you can see special ed transportation up two hundred and fifty-five thousand. That's a fifty-four percent increase. And so that's been a big storyline in the fiscal twenty-three budget, and it's been playing out here. Uh, the only other area where this is played out, and if you beg my indulgence, scroll back up to the personnel line, I forgot. It is the, uh, teaching assistance area, and you can see that one in the middle of the page, and that one is up about a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, nineteen point seven percent. And, and teaching assistance, we talked about this with the fiscal twenty-three budget as well. A lot of times they're used, uh, as a way to help us in a classroom with students who are kind of at the bubble, or trying to keep them in district. It's better for them. It's better for district, the kids to be in the district, but it also is more cost effective. So this is a way to forestall sometimes that, or to provide those extra supports so kids can remain in district. So when you see those added district numbers and the transportation with it going up, this is kind of like the step right before that, and I know some of the budgetary slides that Pam had showed that we talked about with like, uh, the finance committees and, uh, it, during budget season last year, talked about that continuum of how kids get extra supports in district. Sometimes it turns into a teaching assistant. Next thing you know, you might be having an in-district program, or we have programs here that are specialized. If we can't service them there, you go down the spectrum to a, you mean, added district placement. So hopefully, that kind of, those are some of the big thematic issues. I, I, I'm not gonna go line by line, but I'm happy to answer any line by line questions that you have that I just saw. So hopefully, that gives you an overview thematically about what the changes are, but, um, I know it's a lot of information.
And we've had a chance to digest it, cuz it came. So, yeah, I'm sure we all digested it completely thoroughly. Yeah. Um, so this is something we do need to vote to approve. So would someone like to make a motion to vote to approve the year-end transfers?
Make that motion. Great.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We often do the discussion before we make the motion. It just sort of happens. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
And our O P E B trust annual district contribution?
Yes. I gave an overview in the packet, so I don't wanna go into more, but I do wanna answer any questions that people have, but if nothing else, part of the reason we want school committee to vote it is, it has been a very public conversation in our member communities. We are very far ahead of where most regional school districts are because it's pre-planning and pre-funding, and as you know, a lot of school systems don't do a lot of pre-planning and pre-funding with difficult financial issues that are tough to fund. This is a great area of collaboration that we've had with our teachers' association, where we kind of work together to come up with a solution, and, um, that's been very innovative. Uh, we've actually presented on it to other school districts, and, um, so we're in a, in a pretty good position there, and, uh, this is just letting you know how much is coming up from the annual standpoint. I put it in the packet. I'm gonna grab the number so we can have it for a motion.
Can you pull it up for me?
I have it. Thank you. It is, um, five hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars for fiscal twenty-two. It's formula-driven. That formula is in the C B A, and I summarize it in the meeting notes that I sent out with my memo that gets publicly posted, and from here, it gets sent to the, um, the same investment management firm that manages pensions for the entire Commonwealth, which is, as state Commonwealth pensions go, we have one of the highest rated, um, investment management firms in Massachusetts. You know, Calpers in California is a very famous one, if you know about this. Massachusetts is also very highly regarded, probably because we have a huge financial sector here of investment operations. So, um, any questions?
This is a star in your cap, like a feather in your cap, a star on things that you guys have done for sure. The O P E B situ, I mean, it's been helpful to be able to help the towns understand the forward-thinking movement on this, so, so.
The fear took it out of.
Yeah.
Profit. It, it came out of that collaboration concept because there was some feeling that we needed to cover our long-term obligations before we wouldn't be investing more money in school, and I think it was the, the towns' needs, met the schools' needs, and the teachers stepped up. So even when we get into contracts and why some decisions have been made in the development of the contracts and the offerings of the contracts along the way, we have had many years of asks for restructuring healthcare to make it more affordable for taxpayers. So there are some offsets to that. That's a rep. We're not going down if, but O P E B is a real, it's a, definitely all the parties coming together for the, the good of the whole community.
And I think the fear was that an override would be necessary if we didn't come up with, just for, for healthcare benefits, and I think everyone felt like, let's see if we can do this a different way.
So would someone like to make a motion to approve the O P E B trust annual district contribution in the amount of five hundred thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars?
So.
Do we have a second?
Second. Read.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries.
Under F Y twenty-three budget update for tonight, um, I think suffice to say we still, we just still don't have chapter seventy. So we're still waiting for all of the state allocation numbers. It's not going to be a tremendous difference unless we get, you know, sometimes they come up with surprises at the end. Um, but I think if the hour being what it is, we can kind of give you an update on our, where the, all the assumptions stand on August second. Cuz there's been nothing significant since the last meeting. Because there's been nothing significant since the last meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So with that, we are at what is always our final portion of the agenda, which is school committee comment. And I almost always have a comment, and tonight I have one as well. Um, so I just want to thank everyone before we adjourn. So school committee comment is a time to, to just bring forth a comment that you have that either got missed in the agenda somehow, a brief comment, or bring up a question about something pertinent and timely. You know, of course, school committee appropriate at something within our own purview. Um, and so my comment tonight is, I, I'd like to thank us all for being here. We don't normally have, you know, a forty-five minute, you know, delay in start, first of all, but also this is still a pretty long meeting. Um, at that retreat in August, we will set those norms for our upcoming year and decide how we as a group want to do this. But I think we're off to a strong start with an understanding of what comes to us, what we can review in advance, ask our questions, move forward. Um, so my comment is that we, you know, there will be a lot of training that takes place naturally through the course of these meetings. Um, but also it's, it's on us also to make sure that we're doing our learning and training outside of this. So Pam and Avi are always a resource. They, they make themselves overly available, um, which is always appreciated. So Pam and Avi are a resource, um, us, the, the veteran, can we be called that? Members, um, we are a resource, and we will make sure that everyone has each other's contact information. You're welcome to, um, to contact me at any time. And additionally, I am going to, uh, I talked to Pam a little bit about compiling a, um, list of a few, uh, from each town of, uh, of prior school committee members, not necessarily from the most recent outgoing group, but from, you know, the, a term or two prior, so that you can get some historical context if you like, understand a couple of different perspectives, you know, across town, that sort of thing. Um, additionally, Pam mentioned we might do some, some learning lunch type, um, type workshops and things like that. So there will be lots of opportunity for all this learning. If it feels like we're moving along a business meeting, that's why, but we will have it. So thank you all. Any other school committee comment? Please.
So first of all, thanks for taking on the chair. Nice, nice start to the process. Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I do want to say I attended the SCORE Projects, uh, presentation. Um, I don't know if anybody else did, but, um, it was pretty remarkable to see the range of work, uh, that they, they did and the quality of work. And, uh, talking to the kids about it was awesome. Um, it's, to me, it is, you know, a huge step forward towards the strategic plan and the vision of, of what's there. Um, in talking to the kids, it did, did raise some issues that I don't know if it'll be, come to us or it's at the school level to be determined. But, you know, things like how do kids do that while they're doing five APs? Right? I saw, saw one kid who, you know, did a farm tech, a pharm- a pharmaceutical tech, uh, placement in two different locations. He did all the training. He could walk out tomorrow and be a pharmaceutical tech while taking five APs. And another girl who said, I had five APs. I couldn't really do much, so I did a comparison of bagel shops. Right? So there's that kind of strategic thinking that needs to be done. Also of wide variety in how they found their placements, right? A lot of family connections, you know, a lot of, uh, uh, help from teachers, which is great. But it didn't seem to be a system yet for, for how to make that and make it equitable for people. And then, uh, third, a lot of kids say, this is very different from the rest of my school experience. And so how do we think about this being a pathway to that experience? So kids really have a set of skills and a set of experiences that kind of lead them to that in a systematic way. So I found it very valuable, you know, from, from kind of that thinking strategically, but also the personal experience that they had and how meaningful it was for most of them.
I agree. I also attended, uh, the, you know, each morning, and it was, it was wonderful in that way. And it was great to be able to see such a variety. And I think those are really important things for us to, to try to understand, even recognizing that that's implemented at the school level. And I think that that discussion will be appropriate during the school presentation, that, that as we prepare for the high school, we will have, each school will be able to present, um, to us over the course of the school year. And it's on the calendar. So when the high school presents to us and they send, Trish sends her information in advance, we can send those kinds of questions to her and ask her to address them in those presentations. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other?
I had two quick ones. I know graduation got a comment, um, lucky enough to be invited to the memorial ceremony over at elementary school. Um, beautiful ceremony, very nice. Um, so credit to all the folks over at elementary for, but, and also, um, my, so my, I have little one. It's four and two, so I'm not in the school system yet. But my four-year-old participates in the, um, the soccer on Saturdays, which is a private, but I think there's high school students who volunteer and like just the nicest students. And the patience of them to deal with thirty-four, four-year-olds and try to teach them soccer. So credit to the student body, the ones that participated in that. It's great.
We have a lot of good.
Kids are good.
At, at, at this level, we don't always get to let that shine. But yeah, the kids are great. And thank, and also thank you for speaking, uh, representing us at the memorial base. Anyone else have school committee comment?
No, I'll just add SCORE is over twelve years old. What's new this year is the, the demonstration, uh, format. In the past, they would do, um, not closed sessions, but sessions of panels of teachers, um, admins, adults who did their scoring work. So they were more formalized presentation. So I think when Trish presented it as the new thing, the new thing was kind of the more exhibition, um, format. But this has been a program that has been in play for a very long time.
Were you going to say something?
Just one quick question. I just want to make sure our new members, it was very helpful for me initially because I didn't quite grasp this is just like the open meeting laws and how we like to try to handle communications in general. Touch on that? Or did you guys just get some information about that already? I just want to make this, it was very helpful for me to start.
Yeah. So.
Do you want to speak to that briefly, just as we're, we don't have another meeting coming up, so.
Right.
We're going to have some chance where everyone will need to have attended.
I can follow up tomorrow. Give me a little time because I've got some morning meetings. Um, with the diagram that kind of gives the MASC, um, outline of kind of the who does what. But a couple of rules of the road is you want to use your MERSD email for everything because anything you write in that email is public record. So communications between school committee on email need to be limited to information to you from me as a group and then individually to me in response. So like when Jake sends questions, sends them to me, and then I can share, here are some FAQs to the whole group. But you can't get going in a total email group or subgroup with a conversation back and forth with questions, ideas. So don't ever hit reply all. There'll be times when you might get an email from me that says FYI confidential. If something's happened and I've had to take an employment action, it will be light on details, but it will be as much as I can disclose. Do not reply all. Do not send that to anybody. Do not get in a conversation with anyone else in this group about trying to, you know, national curiosities and stuff. So that will all be in violation of open meeting and considered deliberation, even the most simple things sometimes. So that's just kind of a rule of the road. You're going to hear from lots of community members about lots of things that they want, don't want, like, don't like. Um, as a parent, you probably received that annoying email from me that talks about kind of the, um, problem solving process. That tracks to our, and we'll talk a lot about this in the future, the complaint policy that exists as a school committee policy. But I don't know what year, um, definitely, since I've been here, we've lived with it. The complaint policy, um, for public school personnel lives in the contract. So it's considered a contractual agreement. That has some very specific ways in which we're supposed to process, um, parent inputs, public inputs, concerns that get raised about teaching and learning. Anytime you get something from a parent, the, the reaction needs to be push them back to the teacher. If it's really bad with the teacher, they're going to have to go to the principal. If there's issues with the principal, then it should come to me. There's ever a question about who would you get to and who should go, send it to me. I'll, I will facilitate getting it, giving you the information of where it should go. Um, that's just, Dorothy will talk to us about it. You'll learn about that in charting the course, that those issues need to stay at the school level. If, um, faculty members start to contact you to lobby for a program or that needs to all come back through my office. And if it's a concern, um, we can get it on an agenda and can have a public meeting about it. But there shouldn't be individual lobbying for any of the different programs and things like that. So a lot of the stuff that instinctively you want to problem solve on actually has to get pushed back to the school.
It's, it's a relationship change.
Yeah.
Whether we like it or not, it is a relationship change, and it can be a hard adjustment. Um, and I won't spend time here telling you my, my story of being burned through this process, but I'll tell you it's, I'll tell you it at the retreat. I did it last year too. But, um, but it's important that we follow these. So that goes both ways. So parents, make sure we're following the, the process, referring them back to that sort of thing, but always taking input. We can take input and we, especially about things that are within our purview. But if it's about their kids or about concerns about school, we refer them back to their teacher, principal, Pam. Same thing for the teachers. Hearing from someone that it's not about your kid directly. If you need assistance, if you're not comfortable with this, you need assistance, reach out to Pam. She will absolutely, if it's, if it's, if you want double, I'm glad to help too. We can facilitate this. But, um, we need to make sure that we're all staying in the appropriate lanes.
And one just quick addition to that too. Um, any emails that you get, I know people reaching out to the community from us. Um, sometimes people will try to individually reach out to us individually to see if they get, maybe a different response. And so anything like that, but all, all response to communication should go out from Pam or from Teresa. But we shouldn't be responding to someone that is, yeah, a specific complaint right now.
Can I make one? And you can feel free to comment on this. So the way I was trained and taught was that if an email comes addressed to the school committee, including like all the school committee addresses, you know, in it, like all seven of us are in there or a bunch of us are in there, the chair replies to that email. Um, if it, if it goes to the chair and Pam, what's been done in the past is typically Sarah will send a response just saying, you know, acknowledged receipt, you know, Pam will reply to the thing and Pam replies to it. Um, but if something comes to the school committee as a group, the chair replies to it on behalf of the committee. So that is something to keep in mind. But if the parent reaches, if someone reaches out to you directly without it being the whole group, that's, that's okay to reply to. That, it is.
That's when you're going to have to assess what it is that you're getting as.
Precisely. You assess what it is. So for instance, there, there are a couple of specific people that I know that I've worked with in, in that way. And it's, that's part of relationship building too. But then it's on us to make sure that it's the appropriate, uh, place for that communication. Um, but what I think what you're referring to is. If you need a blanket answer, yeah. But, but what has happened in the past is that instead of sending it to all of us and having the chair reply as one, especially during COVID, when people were very upset about things, they would email the same email to all seven of us individually.
Sorry, we did twenty-four hours till I saw Sarah reply.
Exactly.
Send an email there.
Yes. And, and typically, we know if that's the case, but thank you for those. Those are helpful norms.
Over the simplified example, Johnny gets a bad grade. Parent knows you, doesn't like the grade, emails you about Johnny's grade. That's something that just automatic, we don't, nobody can change grades with the teacher. So it kind of just needs to go back to the, go back into certain, go back to the point of contact. Sorry.
So back to what you were saying, like if somebody is emailing individually and trying to get an answer, how do we know? Do we then start texting on the side to kind of see if this is legit or how?
Definitely don't. So you can contact Pam, you can contact Pam, and you, we can do, you, we can, you can, you can email like Pam and me together.
Teresa and say, have you, did you receive the same email?
So I, I will say what I always did was if I got something, I would go straight to Sarah. I learned this the hard way. So I would go straight to Sarah as chair and say, here's what I got. Did you get the same thing? Because she can be the arbiter of that, and it doesn't have to be Pam's problem, right? Um, and then Sarah would know, oh, this needs to go to Pam immediately.
Okay.
So, so yes, you can, yeah, you can do that, but I'm, I'm not trying to like cut Pam. But there are some things that we can handle at this.
There's a lot I don't know about, and then there's a lot that will just flow through because people just don't know where to put it. I don't need more than I have in email.
Yeah. So we can't, you don't want to get texting on the side and, and all of us starting doing that or whatever. But you can always email me as just one person. And then I can either just move it right on or help you understand where it is.
Further add-on to the email, your texts are also going to become public records. So if you're using your personal texts with other school committee members and something controversial should come up, know that those could be called for the record. So I, I caution anybody who works in the organization to use a school cell for communication. That's for principals. I wouldn't use your personal phone number or text to text any business among the committee.
Oh, to text business among, yeah, okay.
No.
Like I have to call.
I'm going to be late for the meeting, things like that. But don't, you know, if we think, I, I just feel like I have to say it. Dorothy will say it too. Don't think that you're going to get away from like the school email chain. They'll go after your personal email. They'll go after your personal phone if there's a feeling like there's been offline debate or deliberation. Hasn't happened to date, but we're becoming, are being warned.
And.
Yeah, that's the issue, right? So we have more than, more than three people. And it doesn't have to even be at the same time, right? Like you and I can have a conversation, and you then have a conversation with someone else about the same thing, then it becomes.
Attitude.
I think, doesn't, everybody has to do the public meeting law training. I have a ten-year-old driving the ship at home, so I need to go.
Yep. So if we, I would like, we can follow up. Yep.
I'm, I'm so sorry. I watched before and then we got sidetracked. But I just want to say, because I know it's, it's June and we're not meeting till August. And, um, I would like to at least raise the issue of trying to address some challenges at the high school before next year. I, I want to just put that out there as something that I think, well, I think a lot of people voted for me to put that out there. So I'm going to put it out there on their behalf. Um, but also because I think it was a, it's been a challenging few years. And I don't see us having really the time to do that. And that makes me feel really badly as a, you know, to my constituents because I think a lot of people are really hoping that we can somehow change the environment. So.
On the school committee level, what are the changes?
Well, so we started to talk about some of them, and I don't want, I, I know everybody needs to go. I'm among them. Um, but, you know, I don't know that the graphs got us to, we need to have a larger conversation about, you know, if, if the sentiment that's coming out of the high school is that there are absences on a very consistent basis, that some kids, you know, will have three teachers at it once for extended periods of time. We need to figure out why that is. Is that a difference between perception and reality? And the charge started to go to that. Um, and we also need, I think that looking at some of the private school data may be insightful in terms of enrollment and budgetary issues and things like that. And all of these things are much bigger discussions that I have a lot more information, a lot more questions to raise about. And I'm only saying this now as a placeholder because I don't know where, where we can talk about it before we get into another academic year.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to spend a little time on that conversation in August when we have a little bit of extended time. So hopefully we can kind of weigh that.
We're going to need to do some work because the attendance issue is a personnel issue.
Right.
And to go to the level of discussion other than top shelf can't happen in a public session because I, we can't disclose who subject, like, once we get to identifying information, that's off the table for public discussion. So making us aware that you feel that there's a attendance problem, we can address that. We can share top level data, but we can't get into who's on leave or identify with enough identifying detail so people can figure out.
I don't, I don't think that's the question. I think the question is, can we have a conversation about strategy for how we change kids' experience when that absentee hap, when that absence happens?
I think that needs to come down as a, I understand that the committee is concerned with that, and I'll speak to the principal. It's going to fall to the principal's management of the building to try to make improvement there, unless we're looking at policy level decision or contractual.
Well, there might be some contractual things that we could at least talk about.
I mean, I can say with confidence, everybody on leave or absent is accessing either their legal right or their contractual benefit.
And that does bring up that we will need to have an executive session. So that is somewhere that we can absolutely discuss, um, some of it. I mean, not the personnel part of it, but there are parts of this that as it applies to our teacher negotiations, we would be able to discuss it there as well. It is diff, it is difficult. This is one of those things where, where school committee purview and what we can actually deal with here. But our role, speaking very frankly, our role is to supervise and evaluate Pam. And Pam's role is to implement things with the other administrators, whose role it is to implement these things within the building. So it's coming up from the building and it's not being handled there. Then, and we're involved, our main mode of accomplishing things other than from a policy or negotiation standpoint, is to pressure Pam to move on these things. So I think that's kind of what we're doing right now, and it's been happening in conversations for a month and a half. So once we get to executive session, we'll be able to discuss how that applies as far as negotiations go.
And what I can bring back to you is I can't move on it with the policy in place. We need policy changes.
Exactly.
The contract language that in place, we can only do X. We'll have to make changes there, and then that will filter back here to non-negotiables or things that we want to hold tight in the process.
So thank you for.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We understand. It is important. It is. No, that's okay. We understand. That's, it is important. It is. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.